...get started, we'll call the meeting to order. It's 6:30. And all five board members are present, so we've established a forum. So we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks for coming, guys. I see we have some members here to speak maybe or on behalf of the community. We actually have kind of a new process we're going to follow this year regarding open forum, which is what we're going to do now. We'd like you guys to sign in, each of you, so that we can have a record of who was at the meeting. And we also are going to have some new rules regarding open forum, just to make sure that we are following policy. So during that time, there will be a certain amount of time, depending on how many people are present at the meeting. We'll have a certain amount of time allotted for each person who wants to speak. And then there will be a whole amount of time allotted for the entire group. So if five people come and we allow 30 minutes for open forum, you can do the math of how long each person can speak. So we do that just for the sake of keeping the meeting moving. Do you need another chair? You got a chair?
There's documents in the back, back there, too, on that table. There's a Safe Return to Plan document back there and an ARP plan. I don't care if there's enough for everybody, but you're welcome to take those plans.
Okay, we'll maybe start over just because some of you guys walked in later. There's going to be a signup sheet that will come around to each of you. Each of you individually should sign that sheet. We want to make public record of anybody who comes to a meeting. We also, just for sake of time and keeping the board meeting moving, will allow so much time for each person to speak, whoever wants to speak. So if there's a lot of you tonight, so we'll probably allow about 30 minutes for public open forum, which will be right now. During that time, it's just you tell us why you're here, explain to us what you're here for, and then speak to what you're interested in speaking about, and then we'll move to the next person. And then after that, then once open forum is completed, then it's no longer open forum and all community members, then the board speaks. And then there's not really like a question and answer time or anything like that. Does that make sense? Anybody have questions right now about that? Okay.
So do you want to take the source of that now?
Yeah.
If most of them have the plan?
Well, I think that's probably what it's about.
Yeah, so maybe address that if they are.
If most of you are here for the back-to-school plan, is that what everybody's here for? Mostly? Anything else that anyone is here for? Because we'll open it up when we get to that point, if that's what you all are here for. Okay, all right. Yep, we'll go to approve agenda and any changes to the agenda. And there weren't any changes.
There is not. What is published is what is being proposed, so.
All right, so we'll move to conflicts of... Oh, we need a motion to approve.
So move. Move by Leish, second by Pearl. Any other discussion? Here, done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried.
All right, we'll move to conflicts of interest, which I have none listed.
You turned in.
Okay. All right, we'll move to approve consent agenda. A on the list is accept financial reports. B is approve July minutes. C is approve claims. D is approve contracts, work agreements. We will have four paraprofessional agreements and three kitchen staff to approve. We also have a contract with ABA-Care, formerly BCS, for sped services. Approve void checks for $75 to BHSSC for duplicate payment for a conference attended.
And that duplicate payment was the staff member papered themselves when they got there. And we nailed the check as well. That acronym stands for Black Hills Special Services Coalition. They do trainings across the state.
So it's for a teacher or something?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I need a motion to approve those consent agenda items.
So move.
Second?
Move by Shunfellow, second by Weber. Any other discussion? Here, not in all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried.
All right, we'll move to the next item. Information, discussion, staff reports. And we'll hear from the high school principal.
So at this point, everything's going good. We've got the school kind of getting rolling. We've done all of our registrations. Well, most of them, we still have a few things to go, but most of the kids have registered already, so schedules are set. Everything's kind of working out. We're moving along at a pretty good pace. So, you know, we got in-service this week. Next week, students are back in the building. So everything's been good up to this point, and we're just kind of getting rolling for the school year. That's about all I got so far. Next month, I'll have a little bit more, once we get rolling, so.
Okay, in the elementary world, we had our registration today. And so that went well. I had a lot of families coming in, so it was great to see families and kids coming back into the building for another year. We're doing new teacher in-service, which we have a couple new staff coming in tomorrow. And then we have our workshop week with the in-service stuff on Wednesday, Thursday. And that Thursday night, we'll also do our open house for the elementary students. So we're excited about that. Everything is coming together, the schedules and enrollment and everything with the kids getting registered. So that's all looking good. Activities-wise, they're off and rolling as well. Competitive cheer started last week. Football started last week. And this week, we have golf started today. And we'll have cross-country volleyball starting on Thursday of this week. Numbers are looking good there. Kids are all getting their stuff taken care of. New this year, we had all kids have to take a physical before starting their sport. And so those are in. Concussion baseline testing has been done. So our kids are safe and set up moving forward with that. So everything's in place. Touched in with marching band and the other activities. And we're getting dates scheduled for that on the calendar. And that's all coming together and looking like it's going to be a great school year. So we're ready to roll.
Superintendent, I just, I should probably introduce myself. I have there's faces out there that I don't know what I see of anybody that I recognize. So my name is Pat Mickinon. I'm the new superintendent of your school district, and certainly privileged and honored to be here. Thanks for your attendance tonight. And before we get to why you're all here and your questions about the back-to-school and what that's going to look like, you're going to have to listen to me. You're going to have to endure just a little bit. I promise it won't be too long about my report and just some things to try to bring the school board up to date on certain elements that are happening right now. So I just wanted to let you know, it'd be easy if you people got a name for me. And I'm sure I've been called a lot of things over the years. So whatever you want to call me, that's fine. But Mr. M, that is too hard to say Mickinon. So Mr. M, that's perfectly fine with me. I've been Mr. M for going on 29 years now. So you're perfectly well within your rights to do that, so. Thank you. School board, just an update on the joint conference. And that is associate school boards and the school administrators. Mr. Fisher and I had the opportunity to go over there. I exposed him to that, being new to South Dakota admin and being a new admin. So we went to some sessions over there. Their general speaker was very good. She just happened to be a parent. And I've had the opportunity to listen to two parents of the Newtown tragedy. She was the second one I've listened to. And her whole point of emphasis and what she is out doing is a social-emotional learning program called Choose Love. And basically, how that whole tragedy potentially could have been avoided if the social-emotional and mental health issues of the young man that created the tragedy maybe would have been addressed in a different format, more in-depth, if he would have got the help that he needed. So it is her mission, after losing her six-year-old son in that tragedy, to go out and promote this concept of her programming that she's had other people help her develop called Choose Love. So it's a pretty neat program. And her vision of, you know, treating with people with dignity, with respect, addressing their social-emotional, mental health needs, that maybe we can turn the tide in school violence that we've seen a rash of as of late. So I just wanted to bring a concept to you about updating our policy manual. The review process on that, I would propose, in looking at our policy manual, you can find the manual on the school website. But it is not aligned to the associated school boards of South Dakota. That's your parent organization. As to the manual that they have basically put forth. They have policy service as part of their services. And it's your, one of your benefits of belonging to that parent organization. So my proposal is to take a look at our policy manual over time. But before we get to that point, I would like you guys to consider, and we don't have to decide now, I'm just planting this seed with you, taking a look at our manual, possibly sending the manual to associated school boards in its entirety for them to do the cross-reference and the crosswalk. Looking at our manual now, at sections 100 through 900. You won't find that in the associated school boards manual. It's not labeled that way. The numerical and the monikers and the titles that are associated, they don't match. So I suspect that you, the policies that you have in place are very reflective what the associated school board has in policy. But me sitting new to the chair here at this district, trying to find where everything correlates and where it fits and how to find it, eh, somewhat cumbersome, you know, in respect to what I would perceive as a better way of doing it. So how would we do that? Essentially, we would publish our manual. I would send it to associated school boards. And for fee, this isn't part of your normal registration fee to the association. So this is policy for services. But what's the amount on that? I suspect when I looked it up and I couldn't really define down, but depending on how many scopes of the policy you have in totality, I mean, you're talking about anywhere from $900 to potentially $3,000 to go through your manual. They align it with associated school boards. And then they'll give you a policy manual back. They'll give you a CD back that becomes manipulable. And then you can have access to everything they have. And then you can start going through your policy manual, just like tonight. We could put it as an agenda item, action item, and we could review five policies a night and start working our way through that and making sure that if there's things that need to be addressed, things that need to be changed, do we operate this way? Is this a best practice? And we can work our way through that policy manual. That would be my hope and dream for you guys. So I'm planting that seed. It's nothing that we're taking action on tonight. I just wanted to plant that seed with you guys, okay? Questions on that?
Can you give us, will they give us a final price? Do you want to start?
Yes, absolutely, yep. When I send it to them, they'll give me an idea as to what that's going to be, so, yep. Update on the medical cannabis policy. Essentially, we don't have to have a policy in place for the first day of school. Department of Health right now is currently in their policy review process. So what I can tell you about the medical cannabis law that has been, that was passed, initiated Measure 26, is that it will not have an impact potentially on schools until no earlier, no, yeah, no earlier than mid-November. Because the Department of Health has to go through their public hearing process, take whatever information that the public is giving them and go through that. I know that they wrote an administrative rule, that some of the things that they're proposing is that you've heard about the cards. So everybody will have a medical card. You have to have a medical card vetted by the South Dakota Department of Health in order for you to use the card, or not you, anybody to use the card at a dispensary. It's not a prescription. You will, there will be dispensaries set up in the state of South Dakota. And you're going to go, if that, if you have a qualifying condition, that you will go to a dispensary and show your card. And then you'll determine as to what is the best product, how much of the product, the dosage of the product, how many times it's administered, things of that nature. So you've heard about the federal, or the Santee tribe issuing 400-plus cards. They can issue them to whoever they want. You can, somebody can come from out of state and say, "I got a card." None of that matters until it's been vetted by the Department of Health, South Dakota Department of Health, a card. Once you have that, okay, then we have to take that. We, as a school district, do not have the ability to deny somebody from a student, from participating in the medical cannabis program. We do not have to administer it ourselves, okay? But if they have a caregiver, a designated caregiver, we have to allow them access to somewhere in our property, and that's what it says, to administer that particular product. So we don't have to store it. We don't have to administer it. But we have to allow them access to that. So that whole process is in the works. But I will bring a proposed policy to you in September about medical cannabis. That's going to be our starting point. But we do not have to have anything in place prior to November. The state did. School districts do not. So questions on that?
There won't even be cards distributed for a period of time, right?
Yeah, they, in fact, you, once they get to November 18, then we'll see how long it takes for them to get the cards out for people who have applied for one.
Yeah.
Yeah. The alternative instruction process, just to bring you up to date on that. Alternative instruction is for those people what we would technically call, or in the old days, you would call homeschool, okay? They're shying or moving away from the term of homeschool and calling it alternative instruction. There is a new portal set up by the South Dakota Department of Ed for anybody who wants to entertain the process of keeping their children at home and homeschool, or schooling them in a different format. There's a registration site that's on the Department of Ed. A parent has to register in order to do that. They can fill out an application. And then that information is forwarded on to the school district. And we can account for those families and those children who are choosing to an alternative form of instruction for their students. So just an update on that. We've, it's already, people are accessing that. We do have some people that have used that. And I have been notified about kids that are, or parents that are choosing to do that. So the system is working at this stage of the game. So just an update on ADM. I just saw a figure out on Ms. Zibart's computer today. And we ended last year at 529 students, K through 12. As we sit today, I believe we're sitting at 525. So we're probably right there where we ended it last year. We'll see if any more shows up here in the next couple of days. And then certainly, we'll see when school gets started. But I just wanted to give you an idea as to where we're at in that process. We have in-service, as Mr. Fisher and Mr. Norton had stated. And that's, we have new staff coming in tomorrow for a little bit. And then we have all staff coming in on Wednesday and Thursday. I am throwing this out as an option for school board, kind of putting you out there. So I apologize for doing that. But I am throwing an open invitation to any of you. Any of you want to attend that event, even if it's for 10 to 15 minutes, to say hi to the staff, introduce yourself to the staff, have a few words of encouragement or expectations, you know, I would welcome that. I've done that in past places. And it is, it is a facet and an approach that does, it's a huge PR thing for staff. I've gotten nothing but compliments and compliments for the school boards who take their time to acknowledge staff members on their time for the work that they do. So just think about that. There's, they're not holding you anything. You do not have to. Please do not feel obligated. And again, you know, five, 10 minutes of your time just to stop in and, you know, say whatever you would like to say to those people. And if it doesn't work out for anybody, I've been down that road, too. And it's not, you're not any worse for wear, in my opinion. I wanted to at least put that out there for you guys as an open invitation.
That's just Wednesday?
So we do meet Wednesday and Thursday with the staff. So it doesn't have to be either or. So you pick one. We'll make the time for that, so. And it's nine, and three, 8:30 to three? 8:30 to three, so.
We need to write another time requirement?
Nah, just show up. Absolutely.
Where do we show up to?
A majority of those during that time, we are going to be in the Coral Room, I believe, which is on that side of the armory, so. Okay? So, yeah, please consider that. And then the last thing I have on my item is our HVAC, our ESRS-2 update. ESR-2 is the second round of federal funding, the application that has been submitted. A greater portion of that, or I'd say all of that, Mr. Bruni, correct me if I'm wrong. The major, all of that, ESR-2's allocation from federal funding is going to be put towards a whole retrofit and revamp of our HVA system in the entire plant. So working with an engineer, have been working with an engineer for, I don't know, four or five months now, right? You guys know better than I do. But the process, why I'm bringing it to your attention, is the application still has not been approved. So I've had conversation with the Department of Ed. And it took me several attempts to get to the right people. And I finally got a chance to talk to those people. And essentially, what we're looking at there is the hesitation, not hesitation, but why we have not been approved is the scope of the project. It's the HVAC project, and we're using it what they would consider to be construction. While it's not a new footprint, it's a revamp of existing. So we're not tearing down walls or anything like that. But they're having a tough time in the State Department of Education deciding which applications to approve that have construction tied to them. They have put out an RFP, which means a request for proposal, to hire an engineer. So an engineer can take a look at the scope and sequence of construction projects to make a determination, is this a viable project? Is it a good expense? Is it a good utilization of the federal dollars? That it meets all the federal requirements that the federal government's requiring in any construction project? Because you're tying those types of things to federal dollars that were received because of COVID. So we still sit here today without an ESR-2 application that was submitted in April that's been, has not been approved for that particular reason. So I'll keep you informed on that. The engineer which we, you have contracted with, who is doing the legwork on your retrofit of the entire HVAC system, is patiently waiting. We, Craig and I, both had visited with him. So he gets it, but that's kind of where we're at with the HVAC aspect, so. I hope, my dream is for you guys, we get approval on that. We get that engineer moving forward with the scope of work that he does. So come late spring, that they're onsite, getting prepped and getting ready for the retrofit and the upgrade to happen. So the first day school's out, okay, hopefully they can work all summer and... Because it's quite a, the scope of the project is rather large. So they feel confident that they could do that, even with the shortage in resources and raw materials right now. Last time I talked to him, he felt that they could meet the needs, our needs, and get that work accomplished, so.
And we're not the only school district in the state, obviously, doing this.
Construction? Yeah, huh, no. I mean, we're not the only one that haven't been approved. But there are, I've talked to a few guys in this chair, that their project has been approved.
Same type of?
Yeah, it's got construction-related in some way, shape, or form. So I didn't really get an answer to that when I asked that question. Why did they and why not us? They voided that answer, so.
And now all the ESRS, I mean, one of the first things, HVAC is air quality. It's a viable expense?
It's an allowable expense under federal COVID regulations, so. But it's all the nuances of it and trying to make sure that everything, the laws are being followed. I think that's essentially. Department of Ed, that's not what they do, right? I mean, they do education. So that's why they were going up to an engineer, maybe to try to assist with that process, so.
So do you get a sense that we'll be moving forward?
I do. He, in fact, my conversation with the two Department of Ed guys were essentially, we feel comfortable with what it is right now and the scope and sequence of it. So yes, move forward. And didn't feel that that was going to be, we're going to be like, oh, boy, we got so far up in front of it now, it's going to be hard to go backwards. They didn't give me that indication, so. That's, sorry, that's what you had to listen to first, so. That's my reward, yeah.
Okay. We don't need a motion or anything for?
No, those are just information that I want you guys to be aware of and know that you're in the loop on, so.
All right, we'll move to the action items on the agenda. First, the action item is to discuss the Safe Return Back-to-School Plan and the ARP Plan.
Yes, so, and this is what you're all here for, I suspect. So what I would like to do here is take some time. And if you don't have a copy, is, I don't know, Mr. Acre, is there a few back there yet? You certainly can. So if you wanted to follow along in that document, you certainly, you could. So endure, I guess, bear with it. Listen to the information that we, the back-to-school committee has brought forward and is proposing for the school board for their consideration. And, you know, if you listen to the plan in its entirety and we hit all the pieces of it, and I'll try to move as quickly as I can. I don't want to leave anything out or shortchange any aspect. And then when we get to the end of that, there's actually two plans. There's the Safe Return to Plan. And then you'll see another document that I had back there that I, I think I made less copies, Eric. I'm sorry, but it's called the ARP Plan. Both of these two plans are a requirement in order to be in compliance with ARP law. And you're thinking, what ARP? American Rescue, or excuse me, American Recovery Plan. If you want to call it ESRS-3, if you want to call it the Biden Plan, there's several different names to it. That's totally up to you. But for every school district across the nation, you have to have a Safe Return to School Plan and you have to have an ARP Plan. The second one is an eight-question narrative. It basically outlines how you're moving forward. The Safe Return to School Plan is to get kids back in school. Here's how it doesn't, in my opinion, puts South Dakota in a little bit precarious position. There's millions of kids across the United States right now, going on the better part of 16 to 18 months, have never dawned the door of a school. have never dawned the door of a school. State of South Dakota rose to the top, as, there's a few other states as well, but we were in school, okay? We did a whole year of education. But those, for those millions of kids in those thousands of school districts that have yet to do that, these two documents are a byproduct of the federal law that got passed in April, or excuse me, yeah, April, late April, early May. So we too, as a state, us as a school district, we're held accountable, just like every other school district is. So you'll see our Safe to Return to School Plan, and guys, we didn't recreate the will here, okay? We used the plan that was established a year ago to get things back open and get kids back to school and move forward with the best education opportunities that we could. So we took that plan as a committee and we looked at all portions of it and we tweaked it, okay? We had conversation about it, we worked collaboratively on it to something, a final document that you see that we felt comfortable proposing to the school board. The second document is the ARP Plan, and that essentially lays out, okay, how this, we are proposing to the school district to address those eight narrative questions. One's mitigation, two is to address student learning loss, and then it kind of goes through other places there where it's addressing best practices, social, emotional, mental health, and things of that nature. So I think the greater portion of the time, you're probably more concerned about the Safe Return to School Plan, but I don't, I won't be offended if you think you've heard enough and you want to get up and leave, you're more than welcome to. But if you want to stick around for the entirety of, to go through each one of those plans, that's where I'm asking for a little bit of latitude and leniency, because there's no way to shortchange it, you just gotta get through it. Okay? So you have it, I'm gonna kind of refer to up here, and forgive me if I'm not speaking to you, I mean, it just kind of comes out and we get into the flow. Here's what I would suggest. I know you don't have writing utensils, I'll make note of that for next time. But if you can make a mental note of a particular question that you have on a particular section that we go through, then I will be happy to answer them when we get to the end of the plan and circle back, if that's acceptable for you, okay? And I see some pins out there, so maybe if you want to share. If you got a question mark, just put a question mark by it, but allow me to get through it, okay? And if something didn't become clear, or you didn't think, well, maybe that's associated with that, okay? And it didn't give the clarity that you were hoping for, you still have a question, then we can do, or I'll do my best to try to address that from the committee's perspective. So, you know, part of this is, if I end up reading some of it to you, again, forgive me, that's not a best practice, I understand that, you can all read. So I'll do my best to summarize as to some of the points up here, okay? The first couple of things are just essentially statements. Having been in, if you don't know where I came from, I came from the Mount Vernon School District, just up the road here. So I've lived this whole process, as well as you guys as parents, and as well as the board members that are sitting here. We've all gotten through this. Ultimately, I can just tell you this. It is, and I told my people last year, my community, my staff members, even our students, the inflammatory nature of this, the political divisiveness of this particular topic, and it's not COVID, it has to do with masks, mask period, masks only, that's all there is, that's what's dividing people right now. And if there was an exact science to it, and if we had the exact answers and not based on opinions, and not based on what people think that's science, you can poke holes in, if there was, you wouldn't be here. Because we wouldn't be having this conversation. But the fact of the matter is, that doesn't exist. We all have an opinion, one way or the other about it, okay? I'm not discrediting it, not saying it's right, not saying it's wrong. From a school district's perspective, in the leadership chair and working with that committee, here's the best point that we thought we could go forward with where things are at right now. So those first couple of statements, that's basically essentially saying, that's what it's to keep in mind, that people are gonna have ideas, thoughts and opinions, okay? And we will never agree. There isn't any of us sitting in this room, in my opinion right now, will exactly agree 100% on every facet of this plan, okay? So masks, utilization of masks. Here's what it says, we'll be encouraged, but not mandated, start school year. However, conditions of the virus perpetuating mask use will be evaluated on a weekly basis. I have access to the Department of Health information that helps me do that, okay? It'll be based on school community, Parkston community, Hutchinson County community spread designations. And if you look way back in the plan when we get there, you'll see those levels, okay? And we'll talk about them a little bit. An appropriate wearing of mask infographic, also, that's at the end of that amongst the supporting documents. Busing, encouraged anytime riding the bus, encouraged, okay? I talked to Mr. McKeon and I talked to Mr. Meyer, and they're, right now, they're fine with the conditions of where they're at. He's talked to all his drivers, that as of now, the necessity or the mandate on bus is not at this time. So again, you're gonna hear this word several times about being encouraged. Students, encouraged, but not mandated, start the school year. Must follow close contact procedures. And you say, what is that? That's in the plan, we'll get to that point and we'll talk about it. Same as staff, okay? It's the same concept. Students getting ready for learning. So if you remember anything from last year, and this goes back to the mitigation strategies, okay? How did you get your kid in the midst of what we didn't know last year during the pandemic? So expected to conduct symptom checks at home. Yeah, how you feeling today? Get up, take a look at your kid, talk to them before they get out the door, that's all we're asking. Before you send the child to school, make sure that they are feeling well enough to come to school. This whole provision, don't send your kid or your child to school when they're sick, that still applies, okay? It's still there. Please don't send your children to school if they are not feeling well. Parents check with your medical professional if symptomatic, and there's another document, what's the symptoms? They're in there, they're supporting documents. Do not bring your child to school if symptomatic. Transportation, parents need to realize we're unable to provide social distancing. The buses are full, I talked to Charlie, and he said they're, especially when we stop at the five pickup points in town. Now, it's a very short window that those, the majority of them are on, but nonetheless, we're still in a confined space. So to think that you're gonna do social distancing on the bus, isn't gonna happen, okay? Riding at your own risk, parents are asked to transport their children if they can, you know, to and from school when that's possible, but we are running our routes. The committee is encouraging all students to wear masks while anytime riding the bus due to the inability to social distance and potentially for driver protection. Again, encouraged. Students will be in assigned seats, we're gonna try to keep that family conglomeration together, okay? So they have that ability to sit collectively or at least close to each other. And then this time of the year, in the spring of the year, if we can get the windows open to get some air flowing, we will certainly do that. So those are the strategies within the transportation aspect. That concept too, in respect to activities, will be the same application, the same expectation, okay? When we have buses going down the road and going to neighboring schools for activities. Encouraged to wear masks, give me, where did that go? And that whole aspect again of community spread, okay? So cleaning of facilities, student, staff hygiene, did this last year. The teachers, I think, felt very comfortable with this. Handwashing schedules throughout the day, students be encouraged to practice those concepts. You'll see a flyer in there on handwashing etiquette, you'll see respiratory etiquette, things of those nature. We'll make sure that the kids, did it slip over already?
I don't think it says. We missed a part of student July, that's good. Got the buses and then we weren't ready to.
How did that jump over?
I think you maybe distance got scanned in or something.
Think you got.
Oh, Mr. Kinnler. Blame it on Tony.
He can hear you.
He can hear me?
Yeah, he stands right there.
My apologies.
That's why that one sentence ran, was confusing.
What?
That one sentence, remember?
It was from a prior page.
Yeah, like, that doesn't make sense, and I read through this thing today. So right here, so.
Yep, pretty much.
So that's page two.
So, yeah, if you have that, so a student arrives at school, my fault, my apologies, okay? So parents, please drop off your students, like they did last year, this is what I'm being told. And they agreed that it probably is a best practice and it worked well. So in the east parking lot, we're talking more about elementary kids here, kids who don't drive. Encourage to drop off, pick up students without coming into the building as often as possible. We understand that there is a need at times, and certainly welcome to do that, but to make it a habitual practice, we're asking you, for lack of better terms, you know, wean away from that, especially with the little kids, okay? We get bringing your kids to school the first day, especially if it's for the first time, have no issues with that. But, you know, the better, the sooner you can allow those kids that independence and that freedom, the better off we're all gonna be. So upon arriving at the school, students will proceed directly to the classrooms unless they want breakfast. Parents transporting their students to and from school to a designated pickup point in the lane on the east side should remain in their vehicles when it's able to do so, accessing those pickup points. Breakfast will be served in the cafeteria. And the NPR for social distancing, okay? Pre-K through six will be afforded the opportunity to sit and eat breakfast, while seven through 12 will be afforded the grab and go opportunity. Mr. Norden, help me, that's what we discussed on the seven through 12, correct?
Yes, I know what we did last year, it worked out really well, students just walked through the line.
Craig, we're gonna stay with that, we've talked to the cook about, the cooks about that as well, okay? It says here, students will have access to buildings at 7:50, okay? Staff will be expected to be in the classrooms at assigned workdays from 8 to 3:30. We understand that there's kind of pushing the envelope sometimes from a work aspect. We'll do our best to make sure that there's some supervision here. You know, I can't have 500 kids in here running amok for 10 minutes, that probably isn't going to work, so.
The access to the building is for the breakfast?
Exactly.
While it's nice out, I think.
Yep, stayed outside, yep. So when we get, where we're at with this concept, you know, during when it gets the weather changes, you know, be alert and if we have to make recommendations or changes, we'll certainly let you know that via the school messenger system, okay? Parents are not asked, are asked to not bring their children to school early if at all possible. If you have to make arrangements, visit with that teacher first and foremost. If they're, again, we get it, now and then it happens, if you can communicate, that would be helpful. While we're here to help and serve, we're asking that it doesn't become a habitual practice, okay? In the case of inclement weather, the NPR and the Armory will be used for waiting area in order to get into the classrooms and do what we can to do the social distancing there under supervision. Students go directly to their classroom first period, students remain in their cohort. That is essentially their classroom, especially the younger kids staying in their classroom and staying with those kids any opportunity that we can. Throughout the course of the day, that happens seamlessly anyway. And we'll talk about recess here in a second. Temperature checks are asked to be performed prior to arriving at school. Students in need of the screening will be directed to the school nurse for evaluation, okay? Oh, I forgot, students will move about the building on the right side, single file when possible. But again, those are mitigation strategies that were in place last year, okay? That the committee felt there's no reason to, right now, to have to deter from that practice, okay? Building access. Outside vendors will be allowed in the school by appointment only, still. Vendors encouraged to wear masks depending on their county and community of origin. That goes back to this concept of spread, okay? All other deliveries left in the vestibule, we did that last year, the staff tells me that works. My time here, in the short month and a half that I've been here, the mailman still comes in, sets it in the deal, rings the doorbell and runs. So I don't know why we would, why we deter from that. Classroom volunteers will be welcomed to start the school year. That may be a concern for some parents or a want to for parents. However, the practice will be evaluated weekly as conditions as the virus warrant. Visitors, parents, okay, will be encouraged, is it, that's where it is? Will be encouraged to wear masks while in school, pending community and county of origin. Okay, we're just asking. If you roll your eyes at me and thumb your nose at me, I'm, whatever. Now, will there be a point in time where that changes? Potentially, but I get it, people want to be here, if you're asked to come in and do something or you want to volunteer, please communicate ahead of times about those opportunities and communicate with your teachers, okay? Cleaning of facilities, student hygiene, that's what we're talking about, hand washing now. Bear with me while I scroll down, okay? Those opportunities will be built into the schedule. We still have the hand sanitizers within every classroom, within our entrances, on our buses. The MERV 13, that's just an air filtration, it's a different type of filter, that's in every one of our unit ventilators. We'll continue with that practice, try to increase the outside airflow when the weather allows us to do that. Social distancing, still gonna encourage that with our kids, especially at the upper, or excuse me, the upper high school, junior high, high school level. Is to make sure that we are not congregating in masses. We're still gonna ask the teachers and us to help police that. In custodial cleaning, disinfecting and schedule available at the end of the plan, that's in there. Areas in which we're doing our best to address, okay? Again, if you've got questions on any of this, put a question mark by it and I'll do my best to come back to it. Delivery instruction, two different modes of instruction this year. Depending on the viruses in the school, community levels and the spread. First, face-to-face, it was very well documented, very well known. Your governor has basically said, every school will be open and you will do face-to-face learning, essentially. So no problems with that, don't have any issues with that, we did it last year. You know, we're gonna go ahead and do it again this year. So that's the one option there, to do face-to-face instruction. Phase two, if we have to revert to a situation because of the nature of the virus and where it takes us, that we would revert to distance or online learning, okay? Those are the only two options. A year ago, even in our community up there, we provided a third option. For those people who were not comfortable, wanted to educate their students at home, but wanted access to the school teachers and the school resources, that was afforded to them. That is not going to be afforded this year. You're either here face-to-face, okay? Distance learning when we are not able to be face-to-face. If you want to do that, now you're talking that alternative homeschool concept that I referenced early. And you will not gain access to the Parkston certified staff. We will help you commandeer whatever learning resources that you would like to do that alternative instruction, but you will not be afforded the opportunity for Parkston teaching staff, okay? That's that third bullet point, there will be no option offered for families opting to educate their children at home, okay? High-risk courses due to the aerosol, you know, the administration we worked with, or they worked with, I worked with, the opportunities for art, vocal, PE, instrumental, those are different beasts when the virus, or where the virus is concerned. So we will continue to work with those teachers about how they did that. Last year, we have two new staff members in our music program. I've had conversation with each one of them. They're very open to how we're gonna move it forward with a recommendation of masks and no mandate at this point. They have ideas and strategies that they're gonna use within those classrooms at every level, depending on which particular levels and discipline that they're teaching, okay? PE, basically having the PE class outside when we can, when it becomes the point where we gotta be indoors, knowing where the virus is at, you know, we'll do our best to keep those social distancing pods. And Mr. Grave was in that experience last year, Mr. Digman, I believe, you know, he was overseas a year ago. So certainly we can bring him up to speed as far as to what that potentially is gonna look like, okay? Large group settings, you know, that's kind of the time where kids are cooked together collectively. Lunch, for one, be served by the kitchen staff, so students are not gonna be allowed, nor, Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, they were allowed to last year either, to utensils, serving themselves. I mean, the kitchen staff did all of that a year ago. So schedules will be allowed, or excuse me, will be developed to allow for minimal numbers in classes. Talking with Mr. Norden last year as to how that process flowed, whether it was at the elementary or the high school level. Keeping many of those components and people on this, on the committee knew that as well and had shared as to how that was going to work, okay? Still plan on using both facilities, the lunchroom that you are used to, as well as opening the. Still plan on using both facilities, the lunchroom that you are used to, as well as opening the MPR, just to make sure that we're encouraging those social distancing.
Armory, not the MPR.
What did I, our armory, my fault, sorry, okay? Well, let's make sure we check, Mr. Norden, circle like, cause it says MPR, okay? That we could change that, okay? For me, pre K through six recess outdoors, we talked about that with the committee, the fact that it was outdoors for now. No restrictions to start the school year. I know last year, I think they were, you know, different little cohorts, you stayed over here, you stayed over here, you stayed over here. My personal philosophy like that right now, and I'm not exactly sure as to how that timeframe works anyway. I mean, so if I, if we have all entire K through six out there, sixth grader shouldn't be playing with a kindergartner in the first place, okay? Those little groups with minimum age requirements, you know, there is no need for those kids to be interacting. That's just, to me, common sense, that's how kids get hurt. So we'll talk to the staff about that notion, about that expectation. Now, are we gonna stop the kindergartners and the first graders? Probably not. You know, using the equipment type of deal and going out there and having fun. But as of now, you know, we'll do the best we can, recess is outdoors, you know, and we'll make sure the kids, we'll, we'll speak to the kids as far as expectations and yes, you can go play with each other, but try to discourage the, the greater span of cross grade levels interacting with each other, okay? Small group settings, what is that? So students and staff practice social distancing during class instruction. This is when you're in a more confined spot. So elementary teachers, if they have a center based, excuse me, a center based approach. That means I got centers going on in the classroom, I'm at a table, I'm at my kidney table and I'm bringing up students, okay? That we're using, we're mindful of social distancing practice, we're mindful maybe of PPE during those timeframes, okay? So it says here, staff will be encouraged to wear appropriate, I see it says appropriated, but appropriate PPE and implement cleaning and exposure mitigation strategies during small group instruction. Same with the high school up there, we'll do everything we can to limit those types of activities while creating the best learning experience that is possible. Again, we had talked to the staff, they've been down this before and we'll remind them of those expectations, okay? Extracurricular. Okay, so the district will follow South Dakota High School Activity COVID-19 Committee's recommendation. They have their own committee, they have men, okay? Two of the two trusted guys are on that committee. The people that I listened to last year sitting in this chair, a guy by the name of Jeremy Cawls, Dr. Cawls from Sanford, and Dr. Mike Wild from Avera, okay? You wanna talk about some real down to earth, plain guys who can, who can speak to layman's terms, they did a great job with that. I trust those two guys as to where they're at on this whole aspect of COVID. But they're on this committee as well. Right now, South Dakota Activities Association is basically moving forward, okay? Certainly want to be mindful of things and us, encouraging us as school districts to be mindful of you as fans and people that are coming into our facilities from other school districts, to have conversations with those people. It's gonna be a, a practice for us to have some conversations with the people coming and visiting us, as well as us going to visit them. And I believe that was a practice we did last year in the Parkston community, we did it up there. Is letting the people know, here's our situation, okay? And we'll continue to have those conversations. Students identified as a close contact, okay? This is something that people probably find inflammatory, disagreeable, this is what starts getting people irritated, okay? Students identified as a close contact would be allowed to practice and compete during the duration of the assigned quarantine period without a mask if they are vaccinated. So right now, vaccination rate in South Dakota, I just heard the number is like 50, this is, the ones that are available, 12 to 100, however old you are. It's 52% in the state of South Dakota. I thought it'd be higher than that, but nonetheless, if your student is going to participate in activities and they're exposed to somebody who is positive, because the stipulation is that if they have been vaccinated, going back to some CDC guidance on that, is that you can carry on, okay? And they will not be subjected to, when we get to other points of close contacts, I'll explain it to you a little bit more in depth. But we'll stop there for now. For those students not vaccinated, they will be allowed to practice and compete during the quarantine period as long as they remain symptom free and wear a mask. Now, there's a few more protocols in that, which I'll address here in a minute. Fan attendance, not restricted, or excuse me, not restricted, okay? Nor will masks be required to start the school year at this stage of the game, okay? However, here's that term again, that some of us aren't gonna like. Restrictions depending on the levels of Scoot community, Parkston community, county designations, okay, of the viral spread. There may be times when we need to limit it, there may be times masks are encouraged and there potentially could be even a time where masks are mandatory. I know you did that as a district last year and that's where again, where we have differences, okay? Our ticket takers, admissions, again, we all agreed to this, that we're on the committee encouraged to wear all the appropriate PPE, regardless of being indoors or outdoors, we'll encourage them to do that. Concessions, we've talked with, help me out here, is it the Booster Club, right? We've had conversations with those people, they will, they understand, they'll do whatever we're asking as a school district. But same thing, we want to be back to that traditional setting, we want you to, we want to actually pop popcorn and get a bag of popcorn instead of giving you a packaged popcorn. All workers are encouraged to wear that appropriate PPE while they're working in that setting. School district will not guarantee anyone's safety. The delivery method, again, monitored weekly according to the designation of viral spread. And this applies to school districts, opposing school districts as well. That's where communication is gonna come in with them, okay, where are you at, how are you doing, things of that. We just did that as a courtesy, I don't know if Parkston did that as a courtesy, but we just let those people know where we were at with our concept when we traveled to anyone's place. We will do that, I'll do my best to communicate with those people that are coming into our community as well, okay? Students with a positive test, this is where I'll explain a little bit more with respect to the close contact. So the district will follow guidance from the South Dakota Department of Health. All students expect to late, are expected to isolate for 10 days. If you are positive and you come down with COVID, okay? Pick whatever strain or variant you want, it doesn't matter. You'll have 10 days from the date of symptom onset, okay? You're done, you're isolated, you're out, you're not coming to school, period, okay? We will educate you from home, okay, and that explains here in the plan. School and the DOH will notify the school and parents and guardians to the student's designation as a positive case. Oftentimes, you're the first line of defense, you know before we do. My plea to you is for the word, please tell us, please tell us that your, your child has been diagnosed as being positive, okay? We ran across that last year, that it didn't quite happen that way. My only concern there, because you're gonna hear from a healthcare provider. You're gonna take your child to the doctor, you're gonna come up with a PCR in some respect, probably, and they're gonna say yay or nay, okay? But let us know. I would go so far as to say, if you have suspicions and you're taking your child in, because of PCR, I think they got that cleaned up. A year ago, it was taking five to seven days, sometimes a week to find out for the lab result to come back. Well, now it's a much more expedited process and I think within 24 hours, you'll have a result, positive or negative. But please, work with us, notify us as to, one, that you're even taking your child, or two, then when you find out if they are. The school will notify you if we find out if there's a positive. Again, I don't know how that would happen, but just let us know that, or we'll let you know that we have an open line of communication, okay? So students in isolation, that means they are infected, will be expected to learn from home. Will be expected to learn from home. Because you have COVID and oftentimes the kids last year, and I don't know where the variant's gonna go this year, all the kids that we had, who contracted the virus were very functionable. Very few of our kids got sick to the point where they could not zoom in, they could not swivel, they could not attend class, very, 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 very few. We had, and if they did, maybe it was a day or two, and then they were expected to be back on the Zoom call or the swivel, wherever that happened to be, or Google Classroom, okay? So I'm encouraging, and the kids, we'll record absence this year, I know they did last year as well. But you know, we want to make sure that we're tracking the school's attendance and only because you're thinking, well, why? You know, we're still in the midst of this, well, Department of Ed is holding our feet to the fire from an attendance rate perspective. So we're gonna do our part, the best we can to make sure the students are accounted for. Now, absent exempt, the exempt part means that it's, it's, it's not gonna count against them in their attendance, overall attendance. We know that they're accounted for, we know that they're home. An absent exempt to the state of South Dakota kind of holds us harmless as well, so they understand that, okay? Staff with a positive test, essentially the same thing, okay? Not gonna repeat that, but if the staff is, becomes positive, they'll be expected to work from home as long as they can work, okay? They'll do those things at home, we'll have staff in-house to try to help those kids that are here and take that approach while that teacher potentially teaches from afar or home, okay? Student close contact, here's that concept I was talking about. K-12 indoor classroom setting, close contact defined excludes students who are within three to six feet of an infected student, okay? It used to be just six, okay, now they've, they went to three to six. Says laboratory confirmed or clinically compatible illness devices such as Binex now. There's a new product called the Cordell Quick View card, it's like a Binex card, okay? Or the PCR test. When both students were engaged in consistent and correct use of well fitting masks, okay? The other quake, or other K-12 school prevention strategies are in place, then those two people are not gonna become a close contact, okay? We will do contact, close contact tracing. We filled out the workbook last year, Mr. Narden, correct me if I'm wrong, okay? We will continue to do that, once somebody becomes positive, we will take a look at those settings and we will identify those students who we suspect are close contacts, okay? So we're gonna do that investigation. Well, the school will notify the students and parents and guardians, here's the concept. You may or may not hear from the Department of Health. I had 10 cases up there, I never heard from the Department of Health one time, positive cases, ever. And that's positive, that's not a close contact, that was a positive. They never did tell me. I found out from the parent, you know, this, that, or the other. But the thing that Department of Health is going to call you, maybe it happened, maybe it didn't. But I, it's not something that, I'm not throwing them under the bus, they're still swimming, okay? With that, they're doing the best they can, but they, you may not hear from them is my point, okay? Any student identified as a close contact through the investigation process is expected to follow, okay? The mitigation strategies, this is what you're curious about. All close contacts are mandated to wear masks during the 10 day quarantine period in school. So they're coming to school, we have an expectation that they come to school and on the buses, unless they're fully vaccinated, okay? If they are not vaccinated, they have the ability to come to school, you will be in a mask. We'll, we'll temperature, we'll basically do a symptom health check two times a day, okay? And then between days five and seven, if you choose as a parent, we can do a rapid test or a Cordell Quick View test to see if they're symptomatic. And if they end up symptomatic by one of those two means or even a PCR, okay? Or even if they're negative, okay? You can come out of that protocol. We still have to watch your symptoms, but then you can take the mask off after day seven, okay? Wouldn't have to be in that for the 10, the 10 days. A negative test will allow for mask removal for remaining duration of the quarantine period as long as they stay symptom free. All close contacts must remain symptom free for the 14 days, even though they're not. We have to, we will continue monitoring that for them, okay? Contacts will undergo symptom checkpoints, that's what I talked about, two times a day. All close contacts will social distance when and where practical. So if we can create space in the classrooms for those kids that we know are close contacts, and I'm sorry, it may seem cruel, but you know what, especially at the high school level, middle school, high school level, you know, there's one kid in there, there's maybe three close contacts, well, you're in that corner, you're in that corner, you're in that corner, okay? Unless, again, they're vaccinated, okay? So that's kind of what that means, we'll do our best to create those situations and learning environments where social distancing does play a part into that to some degree. We do want them in school though, we're recommending to the school board that close contacts come to school. I don't believe that that was a strategy that was used last year. So as long as that person stays symptoms free and follow these guidelines, then I think we'll be okay. I'm just gonna let you know, that's a practice that we approached up there in my former school, okay? And I can't give you the exact number of students who were close contacts then actually became positive, but it was very few, okay? Less than 5%, alright? So that is students, staff essentially is the same concept. Staff are here by the designation of our term called essential employee. So if they, positive, they're out, but if they're close contact, we expect them to stay and do their work, okay? Same thing, if they're vaccinated, no mask. If they are vaccinated, we're gonna expect them to teach with that mask on and anytime they're interacting with children, okay? So it essentially says the same thing for staff as it does for the student. The mitigation strategies are the same, okay? If you're wondering about the Binex or the Quick View, we can do that for you here, the school nurse will do that for you. We just have to communicate, there is a form, a waiver, and we can sign it even by phone. Alls we have to do is identify, designate the phone, parent signed by phone. And then there, there has to be two people and a witness that signs that, okay? And I've done that several times. Last year I did it more than I ever wanted to, and you're thinking, you did it, yep, I did it. I didn't have a school nurse, so I did it personally. I was digging in kids' noses, teachers' noses who thought they had COVID. You know, and even when they did have COVID, I was up in there digging and swabbing and doing that, so I did it myself, alright? So I know what that all entails, okay? I'm bragging, I'm just letting you know, the, the state of the affairs that I had to deal with. What happens if they become sick at school? Basically ICE, isolate, we'll call the parents exhumation, kids not feeling, we're gonna isolate them. They tell me that there is a room down here that we'll put the kids in, we'll get ahold of you, come get your child as soon as possible. Now, depending on where that's at, I could say our, our school nurse or whoever's filling that role and responsibility, because I understand there's probably a platoon approach yet from Avera helping us with that concept. We may suggest to you, hey, you wanna test them? Maybe they're in a, a process here, and then you can say yay or nay, okay? And that, you're certainly well within your rights, but we may say that. Now, the Binex card, I will tell you this, is for symptomatic people. I don't wanna say only, but essentially the Binex card will work when somebody is exhibiting symptoms. It doesn't really work well, been down that road, on people who are asymptomatic. But the Quavell Quick Card, symptomatic and asymptomatic. It's gonna give us a good reading and I think the reliability rate, that's in the 95 plus percent to effectiveness of finding it, okay? So we have that option as well. So if you get presented with that, maybe that's something that we would, you, you could consider as a parent, if you want to know for sure, okay?
And they're both nasal swabs or as well?
They are both nasal swabs, yes, yep, okay? So all testing mitigation strategies are to the direction of the school nurse, I'm not gonna do it this year, okay? Unless I absolutely have to, if somebody has a gun to my head. Students and staff are encouraged to complete screening tools each day, and I think the screening tool is even at the end of your packet. Same thing at you, we asked you to do last year. Board action, board be kept informed about the conditions of the virus in the school setting. Take any action, the emergency, in a board, emergency board format as often as we, as we need to. We'll certainly put that out there. So you're wondering how that works? Legally, we have to give 24 hours notice if we're calling a school board meeting, okay? And when we put that stuff out there and it's COVID related, we'll go through school messenger to make sure that everybody's in the loop. Guys, I'm about transparency, I'm not gonna do something and try to keep you away or anybody away from the process, okay? So I'm not perfect, I make mistakes, but we'll make communication with those concepts a, a very. a very high expectation on our part to make sure that you're in the loop. Board may have to consider modifying the school calendar. Let's say if we end up missing some days, the board may have to meet with PEA, which is your teachers' association. If there's some things that go on there from school, missing days, things that or the other. And we'll be used, expect the use of facilities by outside groups to adhere and implement the strategies and expectations being required. And I understand that that may be a bone of contention as well. But, nonetheless, school, school district, school adopted policy, facility-wise, facility usage, there is that expectations that if there are mitigation strategies in place, we'd expect those to use, outside the system, to use them as well, okay? And if you're like, oh yeah? Well, who's, who's the COVID police? Ah, I don't know. I suppose if you want to point the finger at me, I could be that guy. I don't want to be that guy. I would expect people to comply, okay? And do the best they can, okay? Just a few other things, physical plant sanitized throughout the day the best we can. Staff in classrooms, again, we kind of went through these things. These are just kind of last notes. If we have water bottle filling stations, we're going to essentially, no access to the water fountain. We have water bottles here, encourage your kids to bring water bottles. I think I got 50 of them, if anybody needs one. I mean, I don't know if there's a household that exists without hundreds of water bottles anymore. School lunch, again, be served to the students, so the students don't have to worry about that. Students and staff expected by my social distancing, the best we can while eating. And then, you know, kids don't have to punch in numbers, things of that. So, now we get to the colored part. And some of you may say, well, I looked at this last year, you're right. I didn't create the wheel, I'm not that smart, okay? This is byproduct, mostly the work Mr. McIntosh did last year in preparation for this. So, you, the message from me, I'm not going to go over that, you can read that part. I'm more concerned with the aspects of, talks about acceptable masks, what are acceptable, what aren't acceptable. Please take a look at that. I want to talk about the levels, okay? Bear with me here, I'll try to center that a little bit. Okay? So, here we talk about levels of community spread. This according to Department of Health. Essentially, what you have in your levels is none, you have minimal, you have moderate, and you have substantial, okay? And if you don't, are not familiar with those terms, that's how the Department of Health designates those as well. So, those are the levels of community spread, what defines that. Now, what you won't see up here is absence of exact numbers, okay? There's things that they put on the Department of Health's website as positivity rates. But, when we get to these two particular areas up here, it's going to get dicey, okay? There's going to have to be some decisions being made. I, I, I don't have a specific number, and that's what people want to know. You tell me, well, how many percent is that, or how many kids is that? I can tell you community spread when it comes to these types of numbers. It's defined on Department of Health. The problem is, it's defined on parts of, I think, per thousand. You know, so, we have to do some math and calculation of math to determine where we're at as a school level, Parkston community level, which that's a hard number. I don't know that I have a whole lot of access to that. But, the county level designation, I do. And I suspect if you have a county level, and I get it, Hutchinson County is a very large county. We're not the only community in Hutchinson County. But, in working with healthcare, it's not that they're going to sit here and reveal to me, because I'm not even sure that they have potential accurate numbers per se other than what is maybe hospitalized at the time, you know, and if they'll even share that information with us. I suspect with this is concern that they might give us some direction on that. So, that's the status. So, you can go through this, again, students get ready for learning. Basically, the expectations. It's just kind of a, it's, it recaptures or re-explains everything that was in the plan in a narrative format and just puts it in this format. It talks about transportation, this is just strategies in here. So, again, if there's some words in here that you see, maybe they don't correspond or correlate based on what you read in that original narrative form, like it's counter, it's contradicting each other. It's possible, let me know. I may have missed something when I was cleaning this up after we met as a staff and putting things together, okay? Kind of the same process, you know, expectations across the levels as you work your way across that, okay? Drop-off, classroom, temperature checks, okay? What's going to happen with them, you know? Student masks, here's the one where, you know, people are concerned. So, encouraged for all, mandatory for all close contacts unless vaccinated. Students encouraged, if you're in minimal, if we're in minimal, students encouraged for all, mandatory for close contacts unless vaccinated. And here's, we're getting into this strategy, this may need some conversation. Encouraged for all, mandatory for close contacts unless vaccinated. Maybe that's something that has to be addressed, okay? But, that's what we looked at as a committee, okay? When we're even getting into the moderate and then substantial, substantial, that things aren't good. You know, and I'm not sure we'd even be here if we're in a substantial situation. But, we'll have to just take that when it comes and have some conversation about what that's going to look like. I wish I had a more definitive answer for you. And it may be, you know what? Okay, that's where the mask mandate comes in. And that's where everybody, you know, gets upset. Certainly understand that, okay? But, just so you know, across those levels of community spread, what portions of it are going to be considered, okay? Staff, it says the same thing as students. The methods, face-to-face, all the way across is expected. Swivel, if the necessity is there for those at home. Talked about extracurricular a little bit, okay? Starts with expectations on spectators. You know, operating without restrictions. You know, you're probably still going to hear the same message if you've ever attended event. You know, you're going to hear that commercial, what everybody plugs their ears and wriggles their nose at and doesn't listen to. But, nonetheless, telling you, you're going to hear that. Concessions, talked about that a little bit. Operate with safe food, handling measures in place. You know, want to cross the levels. Encourage people to social distance, encourage the workers to wear appropriate PPE when they're doing that, okay? Use of facilities of outside groups. So, this says outside groups utilize facilities as normal. Right now, highly recommend, encourage to social distance, wear masks for the spectators. You know, encourage them to do that, okay? We're encouraging limit access to areas of need only due to custodial and clean, okay? That is utilization of the facilities and making sure that, you know, it's, we're not in areas where we probably don't need to be or shouldn't be. And then, you know, we're not aware of that. And then trying to make sure that those, those areas are addressed from a hygiene perspective, okay? And then the third one here, potentially considering restricting outside usage at that time. And again, conversation about what that potentially is going to look like, okay? And then the rest of it, I mean, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time other than these, or there's some tweaks to it, but these are questions that were addressed in last year's plan moving forward. And there's some supporting documents at the very end of the plan as well. Again, the cough etiquette, the respiratory etiquette, the handwashing etiquette, how to wear a mask, things of that nature, the cleaning schedule, things that are going to be addressed, okay? So, that's your safe return plan. Okay? Now, it's your turn for questions. Let the questions, if you have any things you're wondering about, things that weren't clarified, things that didn't get enough clarification, okay? I know I've fielded some phone calls and people's comment, a few of them anyway, is, you know, will there ever be a mask mandate? Guys, I can't answer that. And if you all sitting here right now, you have an opinion whether there should or there shouldn't be, I understand that. But, for us, for me to sit here as your school leader and say that there will never be a mask mandate, I can't say that, okay? Do I want that on a personal level? No. Professional level, no. But, there may be extenuating circumstances in the nature of the virus where we potentially have to have those conversations as a school board to consider that option. Will you know ahead of time? Well, I'll do everything I can to make sure that those types of decisions are made as soon as we can, again, within a 24-hour timeframe, if it's possible, which I have to by law, 24 hours, in a setting such as this for those that have those concerns to come and be heard, okay? Doesn't mean that the school board is going to say yea or nay to whatever those concerns are, but certainly give you an opportunity to, for us to listen to your concerns. We'll, we'll do that, okay? That's the best I can give you without answering the question about will there ever be a mask mandate? I can't, I can't answer that. And I don't know, there's a guy in my chair that would stand in front of a community like I am right now and tell you no. Because if they are, I'm not sure about that, okay? They're, they're not understanding, I think, the nature of everything and the complexities of everything that's involved. It is just my opinion, okay? Yes, ma'am?
Talk to me.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, my question is, so if we're in, what's it called? The moderate zone?
Yes.
No mask is required?
As of right now. Yep.
It's not going to change at the end of September like it did last year, is it?
I can't.
Can't say it.
I can't answer that question. Okay, that's where I'm asking, I'm saying the, what is the nature of the virus? I don't know.
Hey, so let's just say my son had the close contact and of course, he's never going to be vaccinated from what I've been reading lately.
Okay.
And of course, he can't because he's not even 12. But anyhow.
Sure.
So, he's not going to be wearing a mask in school for those 10 days? So, he just stays at home for those 10 days?
That's an option. Yep.
And once you make a, if you do a mask mandate, our option is to stay at home then? For the rest of the school year?
No, I think we would, when we get, if we ever get to that point, then we would have deeper decisions to make at that stage of the game as to far as what latitudes are we going to allow parents to do at that stage of the game? That's not in the plan right now, anticipating that, you know, we don't have to go there, but I can't answer that for you right now. That wasn't part of our conversation. That if we have to get to that point, if we do implement a man, a mask mandate, your options as, as a parent, okay? I think that's something that we would have to consider. Allowing and getting that information out to the parents at that time to do that. If that is something that the board feels is necessary. That's probably the best answer I can give you, you know, right now. So, not saying yes, not saying no either.
Just to be clear, though, this is just the committee put this together. It doesn't mean it's in place. So, as a board, we will vote on it tonight and discuss after we hear from all of you kind of what the plan will be. So, right now, that's what it is, but the board finds something different after we hear or we have other things that we want implemented, we can put that into the plan. So, just to be clear, that, this is not set in stone, what you see here.
It's a recommendation, yes.
Yeah.
Proposal, yes. Good use of term. Yes, ma'am?
Pardon my ignorance, I am new to the area. My children were at home school last year, so I'm not really quite understanding. The close contact, it says three to six feet of an infected student. I would assume the cohorts are classroom. So, it's within that classroom, so it would have to be someone who is sitting within six feet of them in the classroom? Since my children probably will not be wearing masks, that then means that they would have to quarantine for 10 days or be tested? Is that what that means?
Or come to school, okay? And with the expectation that while they're in school, that they, they are wearing a mask and we symptom check them two times a day. And they do that for 10 days, okay? Or at day five, between day five to day seven, if you're agreeable, we can give them either the Binex now, which is really for symptomatic people. But, my suggestion would be the Cordell, if they're showing no signs at that time, the Quick View card. And then if they test negative and that, then they can come out of that mask protocol.
Okay, and then so, at elementary students?
Mm-hmm.
Always within three to six feet of each other regardless if they're sitting next to each other?
Essentially.
So, how do you determine that?
Last year, got out of tape measure. You laughed about it, that's what we did. I, I talked to Mr. Norton, yeah? We're sitting there drawing circumferencees around the desks.
Okay.
And who was in and who was out.
But, to keep track of whether my child was next to this child in the bathroom?
Yeah, right.
That's 20 feet away.
Yep, I get it. Yep, understand the nuances and the difficulty of the interaction to the date. One part that we did not discuss as a committee is something that probably, you know, I'll encourage these people to take a look at, is the nature of an elementary classroom. And the nature of an elementary classroom would lead you to believe this three to six foot concept, because what you just described, it's probably irrelevant or relevant. I'm not sure which term to use there. And then, the protocol that we had put in place there, then, any elementary classroom, they all became close contacts, period. And then, we put them in those particular strategies that you had seen up there and going through that process within that cohort. Because how can you control that, especially with little kids? We get that. Where does that line draw? Um, we were pretty good about, and I think these guys, sort of talking with Mr. Norton and Mr. Bruin about, you know, your middle school, senior, high, high school level, you know, we can encourage it, and those kids are pretty good about, you know, staying put. And those kids, honestly, they police themselves. You find it in the classroom. You know, they'll, they'll, we make sure that those kids, where they have them, on receiving charts and stuff, but the kids who are not the close contact, they'll find themselves in the room to make sure that they're not close contacts. But, if they're vaccinated, okay, don't worry about it, right? In any facet. And if they aren't vaccinated, which I get, that's another wrinkle to this whole concept, is stay in school. We'll monitor you, you monitor yourself. You guys as parents help us, okay? But, you're going to come to school for that little short period of window of time. If they want to be in school, stay in a mask, okay? Test out at day five. And that's not our protocol, that's Department of Health. And it's, you know, you can do that five to seven day window. And then you can test out of that concept, the mask concept.
So, is that, I know you mentioned that you're voting on the protocol later. Is that something that's up for vote two? Or is that something you have to do because of the Department of Health?
I, you know, the fact that it's in the plan? I mean, I don't know if it would deviate from that from a Department of Health's perspective. I mean, I guess I probably wouldn't encourage that, you know? But, whether the adopted plan in its entirety or makes some tweaks to it, I guess that's, we'll have to see how that goes. I don't, I'm not speaking for them, they can speak for themselves, but the thing that, we give you these strategies, this is the proposal, that they're going to take a whole different direction on this, so see that happen
Right.
At this stage of the game.
I guess I have a question. Why, when it's proven, if we want to believe in masks and the CDC has proven that vaccinated people can transfer the coronavirus just as unvaccinated? Why do we have it? If you're going to make my child, who has no choice in what I choose for them, to come in a mask because they were close contact? They're not vaccinated, but that vaccinated kid can come. But, they can spread it just as easily.
And I, the only thing I can say here is that when we looked at that data and the material that centers the disease control is, that is still what they are putting out there as a strategy. So, that, we didn't come up with that. That, we came, we got that from, from that organization. And right now, if you look at it.
They don't make the law, but you follow what they.
Because right now, that was. Because right now, that was the decision of the committee to recommend that we'll, we'll take a look at that strategy. That's why you saw that in there. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, so about the vaccination, you said this kid can do that if he's vaccinated, but if he's not vaccinated, he has to do something different. So isn't it a kind of violation to ask these kids if they're vaccinated or the parents if they're vaccinated?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good point. That's a range.
So how are you going to, as the parents?
Exactly. Other than ask parents to, to let it, to be honest with us. That's all I can ask.
I guess my other question though, isn't that a form of bullying or?
Discrimination.
Discrimination?
To?
Well, you're vaccinated, so you get to do this way, you're not, so you're, you're putting them out there.
It's a way to divide again. Yeah, I, I, you know, if you want to put that term on it, I suspect, you know, you can put whatever verb you want to use behind it. Is that the intent? Obviously not. Again, we came up with that strategy based on what we had read and the information from Centers of Disease. And right now, that message, and I just checked again last Friday, that they haven't changed their approach on that, that if those people are vaccinated. But I understand what you're saying, that it has been proven. I, I get it.
So want it to be easier just to do it across the board then? So that way you're not putting it out there? Just if you're a close contact, they all do the same?
Can.
I mean, that's what I, you know, that way you're not causing it to bite anyone.
Absolutely.
I, I thought we were trying to get back as a group, as a whole, and not divide us on masks, and then now we're getting divided on vaccinations?
No. We could, whatever, you know, that's their decision. I mean, we'll take that information, like you just had stated. We want to take that approach, they could certainly write down and have the conversation about that approach.
Will there ever be a time where we can separate elementary kids and the high school? Like they are, like the mask situation, because last year I felt like most of the, all of it came from that side and that our preschoolers, the kindergartners and kindergartners were still having to mask up. Or their learning comes from, we don't know, looking at facial expressions and things like that. I feel like, will there ever become a time where we can separate that?
So in those, the narrative form, when it says school community? There is the levels of school community too. We did talk about that as far as elementary, junior high and high school. And designating or drilling down to those specific levels and a consideration where up there, maybe there is something that happens or that is different than versus what happens down here. Certainly in that consideration. That's what it means by school level. Yep.
Right.
Instead of.
Everybody.
A one.
Yes.
And we plan on following that? Because they had it last year, but it wasn't followed.
Yep, and I, you know, not having been here last year, I think the, again, not being able to tell you what the nature of the virus is doing at the time, but it's certainly something that will be considered strongly as to maybe they are different dichotomies and happenings in two different ends.
I think a lot of.
Sir, I'm sorry.
I think a lot of us just want the protocol to stay the same. I felt like last year, every other week it was a different protocol. One classroom did this in the elementary, and then the other classroom, two days later did this, and there was so much, I feel like all, all of us felt like, what's going on? We feel like nothing was transparent.
Those are key here.
Yeah, changed all the time. We didn't know what was going on.
Okay.
So I feel like, I wish we could just stick to the plan, what's on the paper. I know with the virus it will change and stuff like that, but, I mean, if we're going to do one classroom one way, we should, I just don't want to keep that same across the board.
Gentlemen, Mr.?
I, I feel like you guys now have had a whole year and you've gone through all of this. You've realized now maybe what was a good idea, what was a bad idea. My wife's a teacher and has been one for 17 years in two different school districts. She's at Emory Bridgewater now. Last year, they did not have a mandatory mask mandate. You could wear one if you wanted to, you didn't have to. They had similar protocols for close contacts and infected students. But the thing is, is that, is the CDC going to be your only source of information and guidance? That's, I guess, and then when I look, when I did look on the computer today and yesterday, there is nothing else to look for on that. But yet, there's so much information flying out there right now. Go ahead. I feel like you want to say something.
Well, to answer your question, I guess what we even looked at again, so reliability on Department of Health, self-coated Department of Health, you know? And people can say what they want about that because they have a tendency to align themselves to the organization in which you so referenced, you know? So, but they have the more, I guess, local information that we can make as well as visiting with your local hospital that's here in town as to giving a feel for where they are at from a medical staff perspective as to how they feel about the virus. Certainly those are the conversations probably more important on a day-to-day basis than certainly there's consideration what's out there at the CDC level, the federal level, if that's the way you want to look at it. But those other ones, I think would become more important.
I kind of have a three-prong thing at you for what I want to, that I want to mention. If, are you going, if you're not following CDC guidelines, do you, are you guys going to be going against state guidelines at that point? Or, or your concerns, if there's anything that you don't follow as far as a protocol, are you in jeopardy of losing any funding or being penalized by any of that?
No.
Okay. Pretty much, you're at such a discretion?
I, yes. The fact that there's, somebody's got a thumbprint on us with essentially threatening, you know, federal government threatening because we don't follow this.
No, or just state, you know, some of the monies that were given out there by the government to the states for COVID relief or whatnot.
Right.
Is what I was curious about. But when I see that you're not going to set a threshold number, what I'm, what I'm thinking about for you all is the fact is then you make it look like opinion instead of setting here tonight and saying, some of you work in the hospital, some of you are with the healthcare program. And I'm going to be honest with you, I am a little bit concerned about that because we saw that hydroxychloroquine came as a steady thing and then it was thrown out by our own state hospitals. I don't know if Semper and Avera who had it. But now we're coming back and finding out that it, it does work, that it, that it is effective at certain stages. You, you can't get them later on and then say, oh, take it now and it works. We all know that. All of us that are in livestock, I've treated hundreds of thousands of livestock animals in feline situations. I used to give immunology seminars. I used, I was trained under, of John and Pfizer to give immunology seminars. Viruses, all of those things work in similar ways. Phagocytes, lymphocytes, T cells, lymph cells, they work similarly. And so, you know, I kind of had an idea of all that, but, you know, we all got to see what happened over a year. And we got to see a lot of people's hair on fire. We got to see a lot of people say, you've got to do this or we're wrong. We're not dealing with smallpox. But the thing is, our school and our system out there, with that entire year, we didn't have a mortality, we had a lot of more, you know, we had a lot of sick, we did have some sick. What was going on was most of it was coming in with the teachers that had a social life and they were bringing COVID back in amongst the children. We never knew, some kids didn't even, never even knew that they had had it until they had, you know, things like that. So what I'm trying to do, I'm not trying to run you, but what I'm just trying to say is it may be setting a goal or a, as a level, at least at that point, it would look a lot less like opinion or.
Sure.
You know, your own jaded thoughts or ideas at that moment, at least if you had a level set, nobody could ever argue that they didn't know.
Sure. Yep, certainly. Take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yep, good.
What's online learning? Is the, is the child going to be like tied in with the class, with the speaking, they can talk in?
So, Mr. Norton, you can help me from a swivel, a swivel's perspective. So if I, if we're, we're a swivel one and that's a device, it's a piece of technology where the teacher is using that within the classroom, the tools at home will have access to the classroom.
Even our elementary kids?
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, every classroom right now currently has a swivel camera. What a swivel camera is, is it's just a white device that has an iPad on it and we record off the iPad. You put a microphone around your neck, so as you walk, it actually swivels and follows you. That's why it's got its name for it. So all of that will.
It's live and interactive though, Mr. Norton.
What's that?
It's live and interactive.
Live and interactive, it's just like FaceTiming or whatever else. So they can actually set up, they can talk to the teacher if they have immediate questions, whatever else. And it also saves it. So say if you get home later and the kid goes, you know, I just, I'm not getting this, they can sit down and you can actually wear, watch it with them and be able to pull it up. Okay? That's a tool we're going to use beyond just this conversation, but that's kind of how that works. And it gets all the way through. So for that amount of time, we can do that. We also can zoom within that process also if there are class discussions and so on. So there is a certain amount. Is it as good as being in the classroom? No. I'll, I'll never say that it's as good as being in the classroom. It can't. But it is a system that we use. And again, every teacher's had it, every teacher's been taught how to use it. Now kindergarten classes, doesn't work near as well as what it does obviously in the high school end and, you know, it gets better as you go up. That's just one of those things. But that's kind of how all that works.
So they're there in action with it?
Yes.
The student can talk to the teacher.
Yes.
Teacher can talk to the student. All of that in the classroom.
Yeah, again, it's, a lot of times what we had last year is if the student had a question, most of them probably first grade on up know how to email just a little bit. So they can just raise their hand and say, hey, I don't get this, and the teacher can pull it up and just sit right in front of it and talk one-on-one. So it isn't always, it isn't in front of everybody necessarily, so if they have those private questions, they can get those answered as well as just general class questions. So if you have a question, I can make that announcement and anybody at home would hear it as well as everybody.
So like, if you select my kid to be a close contact, you don't have a problem me saying, if I opt out of the masking, opt out of the, these guidelines, I can say, I'll just keep my kid home for 10 days, do the Zoom, do the swivel thing, after 10 days he can come back?
Yep.
You guys have no problem with that?
Nope. That's in the plan.
And is that counted as attendance or not as attendance? For attendance wise, how well, how is that counted?
That's an exam.
Okay.
The exam part is that at the state level, it's not registered as coming against them. It's accountability on our part.
I think one thing that might need to clarify, Dan, is because last year, like my kids got quarantined and, I mean, they had the Zoom or the swivel, but it was more like a recording we got later, so it wasn't actually live. Is that what you guys experienced?
That was more e-learning that you got on them.
Like on the younger ages, so, I mean, we might have to work on that a little bit with the teachers if, if you are getting your kids home to actually have more of an interactive.
Yes, absolutely.
Setting, but it's also difficult in the lower elementary.
And I know in the lower elementary, a big problem with that is you guys work.
Right.
So they could watch maybe part of it, but it was better off for any of their help to come later and like watch that recording. And that's why I like that.
We need to clarify that a little bit, but.
I think the support aspect there as a parent, especially of little ones, that you have access to it after the fact. That, do you want to? No, but there's certainly questions that it's still there. It's not going to be, well, I wasn't there, I don't know what happened to the little Susie, second grader, what, you know?
I don't know, I don't know.
Well, no, it's right here. And so let's, you know, order to go back.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I don't know, in the lower elementary grades, I'm not sure that we, did anybody ever have like live teaching, Mr. Norton, do you know?
That I'm not 100% sure, you know, I'm kind of worried more about that. Like I said, the lower elementary is so much tougher. And the other thing is, you probably don't want your kids sitting at home by themselves on night班.
Just so we have a.
Watching that. So, and I know they sent a lot more packets home and tried to do things a little bit more on that.
Yeah, so, you know, we'll, that's part of the conversation with our staff train here in the next couple of days is to thoroughly vet that and go over expectations. Now, that was representation, and there was teachers on the committee for sure. You know, there were elementary aged or elementary teachers. So I think we have to have probably during the next two days, it is to have a deeper conversation, what does that look like? You know, student, for clarification, as what is that expectation? And drawing a line in the sand, okay, what level? Me personally, if you're going to sit here and tell me that a kindergartner can't do this, I'm telling you, you're wrong because I watched it, I lived it. We did that up there. We did Zoom. Every one of my kindergartners were Zooming from home. In, they were in there, there was conversation, there was going. Anybody that was out, for whatever reason last year was the approach, but we had kids Zooming in all the time in kindergarten. Mom and dad went there. Some of them were at daycare, the kid Zoomed in. You know, and the teacher had interaction, they had conversations with those kids. So don't sell your kids short. They know more than you do technology, I promise.
All right, we have about five minutes left, about 30 minutes.
And Mount Vernon never had a mask mandate at all during the class, in the classrooms?
Collective K-12 mask mandate? No. Did we put classes in a mask? Yes. And that all had to do with close contact, Tracy.
But they have the option to keep their kid at home during that time?
Absolutely.
Okay. When is this proposal become the final? In a couple of days, a week?
No, ha, no, this has to be, so this is, this is out tonight, okay? And we'll have a conversation and hopefully there's an adoption of it based on some maybe recommendations here that you have all made. But to meet the, the letter of the law according to the ARP law, it has to be posted on our school website by August 20th, as well as the ARP plan has to be on the school website.
Because if we decide to open a road to a different school, I need to know before the 20th.
Yeah, hopefully we'll have a, an end. And if we feel that there's, there's, still needs to be some clarification, again, 24 hours, you know, we'll put it out there that another school will be, if they're not, if we can't make a decision tonight. So I would suspect that there's probably going to be a decision. But there, again, I should speak for the board. Question?
So I would kind of like to go off of what you was sort of talking about with the CDC. I know that you're not, not under the jurisdiction of the CDC of what you do. I would just rather, it's not a question, but a recommendation, there are actual other studies. For instance, there was the John Denver study on the CO2 intake in children got retracted. Politics played a lot in that. Besides that, though, there is the University of Florida study where they did tests the inside of the masks and found various different deadly bacterias that formed inside of children's masks. These are just things that I would like to do, take into consideration when deciding when and where to implement the mask mandates.
Well, and my, my, my statement at the beginning, if I spend enough time, I can find studies that counteract your saying, that you thought. That's the whole, that's the whole point. Yep? But certainly understand where you're coming from to take that information.
Okay, we have just a couple of minutes left. Is there anybody who hasn't spoken who would like to speak?
So I got a little bit of a dilemma here. Okay? Because the second part of this is the ARP plan, which I haven't even gotten into that eight question narrative yet. You know, so you're all sitting here expecting some conversation. So we have two situation, make you all sit here and endure the ARP plan, which by the way, I would like for you to know, if you've seen it, and any input that you would have about that particular plan as to how we're proceeding forward with, to meet the letter of the law of the ARP plan. Or you can, we'll, we'll circle back to that and have the conversation about the plan right now and then make a decision if you so choose as a board. And then make a decision if you so choose as a board. So that's kind of up to you guys as to how that potentially you want that to work out. So you give me directions.
I think we should move forward with the ARP plan and then we can discuss it all collectively.
Okay, so I will give you the highlights of the ARP plan. So if you had that.
Just open forum is closed now, so we're done with taking in your feedback. And then we're going to listen to this and then we'll discuss the two options as a board. Does anybody have anything else before we're done?
All I want to say is just try to make it across the board. So that way nobody feels that they're being segregated. If you're going to mask a vaccinated person or a non-vaccinated person, mask, mask a bowl. So you don't have to worry about feeling somebody's being bullied or somebody doesn't want to give out their information about their vaccination status. You don't have to worry about it that way.
Okay. Thank you guys for coming. Appreciate everybody coming.
So those of you that are staying, if you're staying, you're more than welcome. So prevention and mitigation. So this is the ARP plan. And I'll probably speak more to the school board here now. But we have to address these eight questions in narrative format, okay? So describe all the funds will be used to implement prevention mitigation strategies. Keep in mind, this is for school districts that haven't been to school in 16, better part of 16 months. Okay, so how are you going to open the school? What mitigation strategies are you going to do? Well, we've, we've done that, okay? And basically what we put in there, you know, we're looking at upgrading the physical plant, the continued use of the air filtration system, district provides sanitizer solutions, physical plant cleaning supplies. We'll keep along, doing those things that we're doing, okay? And full transparency, full exposure. So the HVA retrofit upgraded the entire physical plant. You're looking at a number there. It might fall out of your chair, okay? But that's just ESRS, that's three. This is only half of what it projected estimated cost to retrofit this entire footprint with new unit ventilators and HVAC systems. So that number is, yeah, that's right, 600,000. So in our ESRS two plan, there was another 600,000. So you're talking about 1.1, 1.2 million dollars into upgrade the physical plant, okay? Keep in mind, these are all federal COVID dollars, okay? So sanitizing devices, those are just estimations as to the amounts that we had to put in there. So the totality for mitigation, you're looking at that number. Academic impact of lost instructional time. Okay, so in the narratives here, these are suggested approaches to address students who, in our situation, a majority of our kids were back to school all of last year. But we did have some students who struggled and not struggled, struggled to come into school, struggled to stay engaged in school. And I'm getting this from the committee, obviously teachers on that committee. So these are recommended approaches that we can put in place moving forward. Keep in mind that ARP or ESRS three is a three-year timeframe. We have until 2024 to make the expenditures. So these are ongoing strategies, not just a one-time deal. Even though potentially it's one-time money, keep in mind, because federal dollars are going to be used and go away at some point in time. Okay, our plan would be my encouragement to look at these strategies and what can we keep in place even after the federal COVID dollars are gone, okay? So a summer reading academy, that is considered to be an extended school year. Summer math academy, same concept. Those are grade levels on there. After-school program for four and six, a STEM summer camp. That's during the extended school day. Credit recovery for our high school kids who are in that boat. We added 2.5 recommending, we had 2.5 FTEs for math and reading. And these are interventionists. And this is mostly in our elementary, in our junior high. But that person will spend some time, at least the math interventionist, at the high school level as well. And then class size reduction, that is continuing to use a personnel to make sure that the numbers in our classroom stay at a specific level. So these are strategies that we're putting, recommending we put in place to address students' learning loss. These are estimations number-wise as to what those potentially are going to cost, okay? Implementation of an RTI. RTI stands for Response to Intervention, okay? So it's a program that we would contract with an outside vendor on to come and educate PD with our staffs to implement a strategy of RTI. These other things are just vendors, okay? Star Reading, Star Math, NWA. Those are software vendors that we potentially would take a look at and implementing in our school to support learning loss. Opportunities for extended learning. Again, those are the academies. And there again, this is the budget aspect of things. You can see, you know, what we talked about there. Equipment and supplies to assist in those particular areas, various.
Well, one thing I wanted to mention, those budget numbers are for the three years total.
They are, yes. You know, if you see here.
Not one, not three years.
Yep, through 21, 24. Okay, so there is that whole span of time.
Every single number?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. With the exception of one interventionist, a point five, and I think that's further down here.
Yep, it's coming up.
This first point five will be for this particular year only, okay? And if you're asking, why did we do that? Well, we have a sixth grade class that is a one-section class. So to account for that person's time, we're asking them to be an intervention strategist and help us support those kids. Now next year, those kids will move on, fifth graders will move up and we'll be back to two sections of sixth grade, okay? Three, describe all the school district will ensure that interventions that are implemented in the question above will respond to academic, social, emotional, mental health, okay? So our narratives that we, we discussed in here, you know, you'll see a lot of these because it breaks it down by demographic question.
Before we get, can we go back up for a second? Just so everybody in the board knows, I mean, I didn't, he didn't mention anything about the 20% of our total allocation. We had to spend at least 20% on learning loss. And 20% of ours was 200 and.
7, 91,000.
91,000. And we're into, we're, we're at 476 there. I just want to point that out.
We're proposing strategies to the tune of that amount of money to address our 20% learning loss.
The requirement of the, our money is.
Okay, so we're well within the law, okay, and then so. So how are we going to address social, emotional, mental health? So we talk about academics and it's by category, meaning all students, and then it's going to break it down, okay? So here's some suggestions. On the social, emotional, mental health side, things that, one, we could consider. And again, is this going to happen starting on Tuesday? No, we have three years to take a look at this and look at it this year to see if we can't get it implemented, you know, for the fall. Okay, and then there would be probably some adjustments then from a monetary perspective. But a sensory room, what is that? Well, essentially what a sensory room is for kids, especially from a processing perspective, whether it's COVID related or not. But we'll certainly will call it related to COVID. But it's creating a space for kids who have sensory perception issues, sensory issues, okay? And what would that look like? I don't have all that facts. We're actually going to do a little research here in order to do that. And to bring back a, a recommendation at some point in time as to what that could look like. Same as a wellness room. And you can see the different levels. I mean, we're seeing kids socially, emotional, the mental health of, of students who have lived through this experience where they're struggling, okay? And it may be related to COVID, it may not, okay? But nonetheless, creating space for them. It's kind of like a regulatory room. Go, go in and take some time. And do we put them in a room by themselves? No, that's where we have to look at programs and see what potentially would go along with that. Especially from a staffing perspective. Here's professional development to design those programs, socially, emotional, mental health. Those are two concepts there. Choose Love is that one I referenced about the lady who talked to us. That's her program. And then Seven Mindsets. Seven Mindsets is an SCLOL program that I have familiarity with, that I've implemented in a past school district, okay? And it's a true socially, emotional, learning program. So we can certainly do some PD on that. Increase Lewis and Clark Mental Health Services. We have that ins, or that particular, I'm trying to think of the right term here. That, that company, I would say company, but that agency, that agency comes to our facility right now. Contracting with them, maybe increasing that amount of time where we can get kids in front of these people for some conversations about social, emotional, and mental health, okay? So you'll see this all the way throughout. That was all students. Well, here's students from low incomes. And the academic basically addresses the same concept. And we've addressed those academically for learning loss above. So for the sake of time, for each one of these categories, students from low income, students of color, English learners, children with disabilities, students experience homelessness, children in foster care, migratory students. You'll see that I answered that, or we answered that essentially all the same for those particular categories, okay? Four, describe all the district will spend its remaining allocation. So maybe Mr. Bruni, maybe you want to speak to that as to what potentially is left.
Scroll, that's the 200,000, right?
Essentially.
Yep, right there, yeah. So that's what we have not budgeted of our initial ESRS allocation of 1.4 million.
So there's going to be that amount of money after, even if we implemented all these strategies that we're showing you in this plan, that we still have to be accountable for.
Still could utilize.
Still can utilize. And we'll have to come up with some ideas over three years as to how we're potentially are going to do that, okay? So, and my responses were strategies and allocations are not yet to be determined, are yet to be determined. That's how I answered all of that, okay? If the school district proposes to use any portion of its funds for renovation inequality, okay, we've had that conversation.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So is there a certain amount that you, like you said, you have to show 20% now? So you, is there a certain?
No, not necessarily now. You had, you have to use, spend 20% over the three years. That 476 was our expenditures currently budgeted for those three years.
Not just this year, but over the span of time.
Okay, I see.
Yep. Good question.
So of that 1.4 million, we only had to spend by law, 291,000 of it on learning loss.
Over three years?
Over three.
Over three years.
And then what do you do with what's left? You can just do what, you continue to use it this way?
You could use the whole thing on the HVAC project if it was a bigger project. Our project isn't big enough.
Yeah.
So over the three years, we have $200,000 left to use that we have to account for.
Approximately, yep.
Okay.
So five is that approach using construction projects, right? Okay, so that's where you'll see that number again, okay? Now, six, sorry. Before considering construction activities of the district's response to COVID, okay? And how do we emerge stronger? And what are we going to do with those funds again that we just already referenced? It's kind of a replicated question, so I don't know why they answer it. Or I mean, I don't know why they put that in there, but. So we are addressing essential needs, students, ESRS three dollars by allocating the 20%, okay? Remaining dollars with the full federal COVID funding, the district has been allocated. The district is still exploring, considering how to spend those resources to create learning opportunities for students and the staff despite the upgrade in the HVAC. I did put a, a mention in here that district will use its own general fund and capital out of the dollar flexibility ensure that human resources and programming implemented. All those things that we talked about, I told you federal dollars is going to go away at some point in time in three years. We're going to have to take a look at some of those programs, evaluate them, the effectiveness of them and make a determination. Okay, which of these do we want to keep? And if we are, there's something we do want to keep, then where are we going to get those dollars to do that? Right there, okay? So we're going to have to look at the budget to see how does this fit in, all right? And that's essentially federal, ARP funding is no longer available as long as the district feels student learning loss has not yet been met, okay? It's something we'll have to take a look at. Engaging students at risk. You're like, who's at risk? Well, these are the people that miss the most in person, okay? These are the people, the students that did not participate. I'll go back. And then at risk of dropping out. Well, those are the three categories. How are we going to address those particular students' needs, okay? So from the data that I gleaned, if you can look who missed the most, so the district had, the state had 90% face-to-face, okay? Stuff that I gleaned out of this, that 92%, about 90% of our students were in face-to-face setting, okay? And that was more, it's probably closer to 100, but we're talking about the ins and the outs of that consistently, okay? Same with participating remote, okay? I didn't have a specific set of documentation that 98%. You could say, well, he, he just kind of shot in the dark. I gleaned that from conversations with the staff about how many kids, when we went to remote learning or they had to go home, did not participate in that approach. And Mr. Norton, especially at that level, assured me that, I forget what kids he told me, but 98 is probably a pretty safe bet that the kids that had to go home did participate in online learning, okay? So did I make that up? Put it out there? Yeah, probably did. Only gleaned from, probably shouldn't do that. I get that. But if you look at the totality of our kids, if you add up the number, did the math, it's probably pretty accurate, okay? And those that are at risk of dropping out. I don't know that we've identified anybody as dropping out in my conversations. But however, there's less than 5% of the high school population that continues to struggle academically. I'd say that's on average, okay? So what can we do to help those kids with this fund to address those, those potential at-risk of dropping out students, okay? So that's in here and referenced as well. How would we do that? Basically some credit recovery options, being more intentional, specific with them and creating those learning experiences, whether it's in-house or using things like at the virtual school that we have access to, okay? And then the consultation, that basically describes the committee, the makeup of the committee, and the people that we had on it. So that's your ARP plan. That's what we're proposing to take your federal ESRS threes dollars, ARP dollars that we've been allocated, 1.4 million, Mr. Bruni, is that about right?
A little over, yep.
Okay, and how we propose to spend that money moving forward. Is it all in stone? No. Even if you adopt it, they understand that this is a fluid document because you have three years to spend it, right? So just because you make a motion tonight on adoption of the ARP plan, again, we have to have in place to be in compliance with the ARP law by August 20th, does not mean that it cannot change. And it certainly will, because a lot of those strategies, social, mental health, is something that we'll have to investigate, conversations with the staff, how do we feel about those types of approaches, okay?
And how often do we review it?
You have to review both of these plans. Essentially, it says six months, but there's a December one child count, we'll review it. And then there is at the very last page of that.
It's June?
It's June. Yep, so December, June, December, June. So essentially six months.
So you can continue to make changes to it during that timeframe and then come back and approve it again?
Yep, absolutely.
As circumstances change.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Okay. So that's the ARP plan. I, way more than you wanted, but technically to meet the letter of law, this is what we had to do, okay? Now, questions about the ARP plan? Okay, conversations then as to how you want to see those.
So does anybody have any comments about this ARP plan that was discussed? Do we feel like this is a good plan? I mean, it's a place to start, right? Yeah, we need to get it out there and get it started. So we can continue to make changes as we need to.
Yep.
Okay, so we feel like this is a good, all right. So why don't we each just share our thoughts on the.
Do you want to just do a motion to approve the ARP plan?
Yeah, we sure can. Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we do that even though it's, they're both under the same thing?
Two separate, two separate things, right?
Two separate plans, yeah.
Yep.
It's all, it's still a two separate motion.
But you can break that up. Okay, got them.
I'll second it.
By Sean Felder. And seconded by Neeble to approve the ARP plan as presented. Any other discussion? Clear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carried.
Okay. So we'll just maybe start with you, Judd, on your thoughts regarding the back-to-school safety plan and where you're at. Do you have any thoughts?
You know, it was awesome having people from the committee here tonight. You know, I mean, we're all here for the same reason. We love our kids and we love our community. You know, there's a couple of things in here, you know, and before I kind of get started in this, I mean, I've been on four different continents in defense of this country. And you know, I'm, I'm not an anti-back person by, by any stretch of the imagination. But wow, I kind of have a little bit of mixed feelings on, because this is such a fluid situation with different strains and everything that's going on. I mean, I gave blood last week and COVID's been through our home. I still have the antibodies.
Sure.
I mean, it, so I don't know, maybe I'll live forever, maybe, maybe not. But it, I, I have a little bit of a hard time putting a kid in a mask versus having a child, you know, that, that has been vaccinated, not have to wear one. I think it's going to create some, a little bit of a rift. Anybody else's thoughts on that?
I, so I was at the committee and a couple of the comments just, you know, because we actually had that same exact discussion during the committee. It got brought up about HIPAA. It got brought up about discrimination. There was teachers, parents on the committee, so I think there was a pretty well-rounded committee. And you know, their, their discussion at that time was, not that they want, I mean, they just felt like, number one, that was the CDC recommendations. They're kind of going with that at this point. But what was this? They, they kind of thought that, they didn't want to discriminate. But what the teaching staff had said was, well, we ask everybody for their vaccinations when they enroll in kindergarten. So why can't we ask them for a COVID vaccine card? Was the comment that was made.
Well, and the con, how, how that was addressed is, the differences between the two is that vaccinations to enter school in the state of South Dakota is codified law.
Right.
Where there is no codified law. Where there is no codified law attached to the vaccination to address the COVID, uh, issue at this time.
The COVID vaccine specifically, right?
Yeah, exactly.
There's a list of vaccinations you need to have to enter, but COVID is not on that list, is what you're saying, yeah?
So that was the only discussion that we had during the committee. And I, I don't think there's, I mean, I think you've got a good point, maybe I've got a good point too.
Mm-hmm.
Any other thoughts, Jed, that you had?
Um, no, I mean, I, I think we'll use, you know, we will do the best we can for our kids this year, as we always do.
Okay, Lindsay?
I personally like the plan, I think it, it seems like a happy medium for now. I'm hoping that we don't have to talk about mandates or anything like that. The one thing that, and I, I understand the community concern about setting a level just so it's more black and white and kind of across the board, but the one thing I would caution is that when you're looking at like a Hutchinson County rate, you know, that could be some other community and all of a sudden we're talking about having to mandate that, handing masks, and it's not really affecting our community. So I think that's, to me, that feels a little bit scary. I think we should, like you've recommended, kind of really look at our community here in Parkston School Community specifically, and way in Hutchinson County. But, um, I, I understand why people want a black and white number, but I think that gets a little bit hairy because it all depends on how many people you're testing in different communities. So I think like you have mentioned, it's, it's important to evaluate all facets of that, not just set a black and white number.
Right. And maybe that's, I, you know, in recalling the conversation there, we even talked about that, is how did you quantify? How do you quantify at the school level? How do you quantify at the Parkston community level?
It's hard for, because it's subjective.
It is.
But, but it's, I mean, like Lindsay mentioned, you know, Hutchinson County, we.
Yeah, I mean, I think you have to take them all into consideration. That's why I think we, we talked about listing all facets of them and not saying one in of it by itself, that it's just this one, or it's just this one, or it's just this one. I think it's a collective approach and conversations and consideration of all of those facets. But you bring up a great point. I mean, so where we're at with the virus and people's, I think, you know, hesitations, reservations, one way or the other, or even the testing aspect of it, you know, people not even going to that level anymore. So the numbers, you know, that we're trying to hang a hat on here, at least take a look at it and take into consideration the accuracy of that because how many people are getting tested anymore? You know, how many are going to sit at home and essentially wait, write it out? Don't seek medical support or medical advice or, you know, don't, we'll find out what that situation is that they're dealing with. So, yeah, I mean, uh, certainly a moving target, for sure. But in the plan, the notion that we're at least going to take a look at those. I mean, doesn't have to be the end-all, the be-all, but we certainly have those in consideration. And I know it says, uh, based on levels of community spread. But I think collectively, a collective approach to all of those. So let's say Hutchinson County is, let's say they're insubstantial. But when you, we take a look at our school community, then what does that number look like? How many we know for fact that we have identified as being positive? Let's say there is none, okay? So what is our strategy moving forward with that? Is it time to have that conversation about masked, no masks, you know, and vice versa? And that even goes down back to the level that they referenced tonight, I don't remember who said it, but, you know, elementary versus, this end versus that end? I mean, if we even do that?
I do kind of like that concept, I think. I know last year we had a bit of one-size-fits-all, but, you know, I would certainly be open to entertaining that.
So I, I, I'll be quiet.
Go ahead, John, what do you think? Are you done, Lindsay?
I'm done, I'm good. That was the only thing, I just, I just want them to realize that, you know, we're trying to be transparent and not, we don't want to set a black and white number, but we're not trying to hide statistics either. It's just, it's such a moving target.
Well, and any conversation is public.
Right.
So any meeting we have of why we discuss what we would or wouldn't is public, so anybody can attend in here, yeah? Okay, what do you think?
Um, yeah, I had, I was in a few days ago and talked to Mr. M. And, uh, and so that was kind of the concern I had is what parameters, you know, I'm a numbers guy. And so what parameters do you have to, what triggers the switch? And so you guys are touching on that here, and so, um, yeah, I think it's been well thought out, the plan at this point in time. Um, I think we got to see how things happen, or hopefully not happen. Um, the, a little bit on the mask situation, when they talked about vaccinated or unvaccinated. If, if we're not going to clarify that, if, if we know that people have been exposed. And so, um, what we do there, of course, we're trying to designate which has been vaccinated or not vaccinated. If, if we just have a fit-all situation, if they've been exposed, do we have enough corners of the classroom to isolate everybody? If I follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, essentially so, and I think that will be dictated by, at each level, Mr. Pearl.
Yeah, no, I get that.
I think that the ability to do that. So, you know, there's a notion there, and I certainly, if I could take anything away from that conversation or the people's comments, would be, you know, consistency. If, you know, not to, you know, um, put this aspect or allow the aspect of vaccinated versus unvaccinated. So, and back, my experience has been, and I hate to keep relying back on that, guys, but that's, you have to go to where your, your, your knowledge is coming from. Um, at the time, where we implemented the close contact strategies of ten days in a mask, and we even evolved from that to the five to seven days because that was implemented before school got out, um, at the time. The, those that we closed, that we, we contacted, traced, filled out the workbook at the high school level, the middle school level, because of the nature of the class, and teachers, they, they adjusted their teaching strategies, they adjusted their methodologies, you know? We did things differently at those two levels based on the virus. I mean, we used to be more interactive, we used to do more group project, we used to do small group projects, but teachers stayed away from that. Why? For that particular reason where we could isolate those particular kids that were identified as close contacts within, within those classrooms. They were, seating charts were the same in every classroom. We had the exact same structure. So if I was Timmy, my seat was in this particular classroom, fourth row over, one at the very back, I got in the same row, in the same chair, in every classroom I was in. And every kid was in the same chair and in the same row in every classroom moving forward. So you had those kids, the isolation aspect at that level, much easier to do. We made the determination that the nature of an elementary classroom, because of the inability to isolate, the inability to stop the interaction for a teacher to teach the way they needed to teach the class as a whole, the section, they were all a close contact, period. And they had to wear the mask for the ten days if they wanted. If they didn't want to, they had the option to stay home and interact with the learning process that way. That was the strategy that we employed. So very few takers on that. Most, I would say ninety-five percent of the kids came to school and they wore the mask for the ten days. And then when we had the ability to test out of it, those that wanted to do that, we afforded that opportunity for them with a negative at that time, buy an X-NOW card or a PCR, if they wanted to provide that. Other than that, they stayed in the ten days. So to answer your question, I don't know that they did, is, do we have that ability? Up here, more so than down here, not because of size, not because of the footprint of the facility, but more to do with how to teach there and keep kids isolated versus what it would look like at this end. And thus, the elementary aspect of, you know, if we're not talking about, and obviously, if I'm twelve and under, or eleven and under, there is no vaccination for those kids. And the compromise that the plan puts out there is, if they don't want to do that, they have the opportunity to stay home and do it ten days. And we'll do our best to educate them while they're during that ten-day span of time. So, and I think that's, I think that's what the plan lays out. So John, I don't know if I answered your question or not.
Yeah, I think, I think we, again, I, I think we're trying to put the right steps forward and I think we got to, hopefully, we, um, we have a very good year health-wise and don't have to, but, but you got to have something in place. My question to you and the administrative staff is, are you going to have, um, some type of correspondence with us as board members on a weekly basis, or every few days, or? So we keep abreast to?
Yeah.
But we might have to be looking at addressing or not addressing.
Yep, so, yeah, I mean, that's, I think, in conversations with all of you, is that communication level that I think you're used to, on a weekly basis, for sure. Um, and something that obviously, when we get going here moving forward, will that start? Yeah, I mean, absolutely, to, to tell you what I know about where we're at from the virus's standpoint, amongst other things, for sure. But at least, that, that's a main component of, of, week to week, as to where we're at with that concept. I think it has to be.
Okay, Matt?
So, uh, where I am at on this is, um, anyone twelve and older has had ample time to get vaccinated. If they're not vaccinated by now, they're not going to get vaccinated. So they've made, made that choice to not get vaccinated, so, I mean, they're kind of at the risk, is the way I look at it. I thank the committee for this report. I think a lot of good work went into this. I would have liked to see this last year, I think this would have worked well, um, last year. This year, I kind of echo Jed's sentiment of, um, having non-vaccinated, um, students wear masks. I also have concerns about the community spread. I think it's got to be in the school or not. I mean, we can monitor the community, the county, like you said, but it's got to be in the school. That's what we're here to govern. And to touch on Tom's point, I agree with a lot of that, but as Lindsay said, in my opinion, if this new Delta variant, whatever, is more infectious, like they said, I think ten cases in two weeks is going to seem like a lot, but I think in January, it's not going to seem like anything. So in my opinion, kids are going to get sick. There's going to be breakthrough cases of vaccinated people getting sick, and we know that's going to happen. COVID is here to stay. When I first looked at this plan, I thought, well, it's not, it's pretty good. My, my whole family's vaccinated, in either totally vaccinated or in the process of shortly being vaccinated here, so I'm like, I've got nothing to worry about. But then I started thinking more about it, and I really think that's going to cause some, some angst amongst groups. And also, then I got to thinking about myself again, and I've looked at the percentages, the risks, and I am comfortable with the risks of my vaccinated kids being around close contacts. So I, if, if you're asking me, I don't think we need to have close contacts masks. But that's one man's opinion. One other short story I will share. We went on a family vacation this year to Yellowstone. People everywhere. Common theme that I saw multiple times, at least ten times, was a family unit outside amongst themselves. Didn't matter how many people were in the family. Nobody would be masked except for one person. And there'd be a eight-to-twelve-year-old kid that had a mask on outside, away from everybody. And I really think that this constant bombardment of, got to wear this mask, got to wear this mask, is causing some psychological problems. And I, you know, the first two, couple of times, I just kind of blew it off, but it was a repetitive thing, and it really caught me off guard. So that's where I'm at.
I, uh, I am thankful for the committee working on this plan, I think it was really good. Um, I know it probably took a long time, like, how long were you guys together?
Sure, a day.
Yeah, that's a long time to sit in the same room and talk about this. Um, so I appreciate that. The, um, one thing that I have concerns about, and I feel like, going to say this, and we're all kind of far apart from each other, is that I don't, and I don't know how to quantify it, but to me, it seems kind of crazy that we would have an orange moderate and go from orange moderate to red and closing the school, and there's no mitigation in between. Like, I don't, like, to me, if I closed the school down, I would hope that we would have done something before we closed the school to try and mitigate that, which to me is at some point, you have to mandate masks. There's no option before you close a school. Like, I would never want to close the school. So if that meant that I could keep kids in school and you get to a certain point and you mandate a mask, that makes sense to me. Do I want to have a ma- mask mandate starting the school year? Absolutely not. I like it the way it is, I like green, I like yellow. My only concern is orange. I don't know how to quantify that. I think some notes I made was having some bullet points of things that we would look at, of, you know, like, what things would we look at if we were in orange or moderate spread in our community? Because I think it's going to be really hard to know where Parkston's at versus Tyndall or wherever else you are. I mean, Tyndall's not in Hutchinson, but you know what I mean? Um, I, so I don't have an answer for that. I have angst about elementary being different than high school only because I have a child in elementary and in high school, and I know I'm not the only person that experiences that, and I think it's kind of crazy. My kids would go home and be together, and then one comes and gets masks, the other one doesn't. That seems crazy to me, but, um, that's just me. And that's why we're all here, because we all have different perspectives, so, um. I also have concern about masking vaccinated, unvaccinated people, but not masking vaccinated people. I think we already know vaccinated people can be positive. So I think that I don't want to do that either. In fact, in our work environment, we don't do that. If we're not all vaccinated in the room, everyone wears a mask. And we know who is and isn't because we all work together. So every meeting, we wear a mask because that's where we're at. And I don't want to make anyone feel bad or different or excluded or whatever. But to your point, they've had a long time to get it. And we also want people to get vaccinated, that's what we're told we're supposed to do. So it's hard to know what the right thing to do is, and I've thought about a lot of it, and I don't really have a good answer. And I know people will never be happy with what we decide, there will always be someone who's going to be upset. My goal, and I think our board's goal, is to keep kids in school. So I think we just have to find a happy medium of where we can be. I don't want people to leave our school district, but I also don't want kids to be sitting at home going to school. I don't want to go from orange, where no one's wearing a mask, to red and we close the school. Is that going to happen? I have no idea. I don't know. I mean, the way they're projecting it, this looks different, it spreads faster, um, kids are more affected, uh, I don't know, I don't have a good answer. Certain people can't even get vaccinated, so it seems kind of hard to say we wouldn't put measures into place at some point. That's where I'm at.
Can I ask you a question? So a few of the comments that were referenced by people in attendance, if there was a common theme that you could hear, um, and it has to do more... if there was a common theme that you could hear, and it has to do more, I think, along the vaccination route, what, what, what did you hear? So I wanna know if you heard the same thing that I heard concerning vaccinations and this, the mask aspect. I mean, what did you guys hear?
Mostly it was just one of the same across the board.
Okay.
That's what I heard.
Right, same? I mean, yep, so either we all are or to maybe Matt's suggestion, from a close contact perspective, we're, we're not.
Yeah.
You know, so not distinguishing, you know, that part of the plan where it says if you're vaccinated, there's this protocol. If you're not vaccinated, there's this protocol. So is that something that we have to address within the plan? I mean, that's, that's why I asked the question. That's what I heard. I mean, just feedback on that. And which, which strategy is that?
So there's, so there's gonna be a lot more people wearing masks then? Which is what the main theme I hear is they don't like the masks.
Right, but the simplicity of it, I mean, you're treating them all the same. Now, the caveat there that is in the plan is you have the 10 days. If you've been identified as that, close contact, you have the option to keep your child at home. We'll do our very best to educate that child or children, whoever it is, whatever it is, from while they're on that 10-day quarantine period. So the fact that unless, I heard unless you're vaccinated. I got the feeling that unless you're vaccinated, those three words need to maybe look, be looked at to not distinguish between.
I don't know if parents have, a lot of parents have the opportunity to be home. But if one kid has it 10 days and gets over it and you have four kids, next one gets it. I don't even know if there's enough time at home to, with the parents to.
But that they have the choices in their child to school and a mask.
I think the, the hard part about.
Same sign? Motion carried. Okay, Mr. McKinnon asked me to get a few numbers and really the only numbers I had coming, you know, totals. We didn't keep track of the last five years of student activity pass totals and adult and senior citizen pass totals. We just did lump sum activities passes. Okay, so for the last five years, this was the income that it took in. So in '16, '17, it was $9,300. '17, '18 was $8,600. '18, '19 was down a little, $6,700. '19, '20 was $8,400. And then last year, we lowered the prices considerably because we said no refund. It was only $2,900 or almost $3,000, $2,985. I rounded all those to near $100, so.
So $8,500 average?
Average, $8,000, $7,000 to $8,000, yeah. Those are the last five. COVID year, last year really doesn't count. You know, so, you know, will, if you set a family pass at 100 bucks or 125, whatever, are you gonna get 80 fa- 70 families to do that, 50 families to do that? Maybe? I don't know. Would that be any different? Would you give more people to buy a family pass than all these individuals? Because I think what happens a lot of times is they buy three passes, one for the kid and the kid shares it. Because the kids are all in activities anyway.
Sure.
I mean, my kids that are, if they're in two sports, you know, they only need it for the one. So is their idea of a family pass maybe not bad? I don't know.
I would lean toward more of either just, either leave it the way it is or just make students free. I think, I think a family pass would kind of disadvantage single parents more than, than others. So.
Just pay, just do the adult pass.
Adults at 50, is that what, is that what we were?
That's what it was prior to actually, yes. Adults 50 for a regular adult and 30 for a senior citizen. Because the student and the senior citizen was the same price.
I did get some community feedback and one family had reached out stating that they spent, I think she said $240 for a family, for their family, for path, for activity passes for their family per year. Or $25 a game for each student. And she said oftentimes, like, one parent would go and one would stay home and watch or like there might be a circumstance where one child is at a different event and then wants to come back and they wouldn't go because it's gonna cost them another such and such dollars to attend. And so she was really wanting to see their students free or family pass.
Well, and if you did a family pass on 100 bucks, that's two adults, a 15 piece and all students are free, basically.
So our goal here is to try and get student participation higher than what it is.
Right, and that was your goal, was student participation at events?
Yep.
Right?
To make it equitable so that everybody can come.
And they don't have to worry about.
I think with the year, I mean, we, a lot of our notes, we all can agree on that. I don't think that'd be a bad idea, especially rolling into this year especially.
Now, for you Jed, I don't know if you know, last year what we did was, I mean, it was $30 for an adult, right? Did you know that?
I think so.
And 15 is all for the students and then it was non-reversible, is put in the wording.
Yep. I got some feedback too from parents and consensus was, you know, with you have three, four, or five kids, you know, it does, it does, it's gonna take a, take a toll, you know? I mean, you survive daycare.
Back in, back in the day, a $200 check, I mean, it's $190 for a family of five.
Yeah.
I think we agree that kids should be free. I mean, I hear that's what I hear.
I think especially this year, we can, you know.
Kids are free. So what do we wanna do with the adult passes?
Make them adults only?
Adults only. What price do we wanna put them at?
Is there anything wrong with the previous?
The 50, $50 is 10 events. That's, that's one season.
Your gate price is five bucks for a single event. Or do you do six and four for double headers?
For double headers, yes. But let's say it's, I shouldn't say, the winter seasons for basketball ball, or basketball volleyball, those three seasons, you approximately have 10 home events. Now, 14 of them are double headers. But, I mean, so it's roughly 10 to 12 events.
And football, I mean, football's going.
Yep.
So what I'm hearing you say is, I don't hear you, $50 is not out of line for an adult pass? That it seems to be palatable?
Cuz there's numbers of events that there are. You got 10, 20, 30, 35, maybe four wrestling.
I mean, if you don't go that much, you just don't get passed.
You know, I mean, if you paid it everything you went to and you went to everything, you're probably spending about 40 events, 35 to 40 events. Does that sound about right, Mr. Gregory?
We have 33 that we take tickets for.
And that includes play?
Classics, that includes the play, two track meets. I think we only have two wrestling events.
This year?
It'll be in a triangular. So, yeah, you're talking 33 total events, including the play, that we take tickets for. Again, the little, or the Parkston Classic, we don't take. Somebody else takes those tickets and there's.
We don't accept the activity passes at this.
So there you go.
Now, that is something you could do because we are like the only classic anymore that does that. The reason why that we've done that in the past is the money that goes to the classic gets distributed back to the.
Other schools.
Schools. Well, last year I had a $5 check to every school. So to me, just accept our activity passes and we eat the price or we keep the little revenue that there is.
Is that a deterrent for people participating?
The reason why.
Is that a deterrent for other teams participating?
We're the only one that, we get a check back from.
Yeah.
I mean, Redfield did it, but they never made money because there was 10 people at the classic. I mean, their attendance was, I mean, horrible.
So if I get an invite as an opposing school, well, how much money are you gonna give me back?
They've never asked. So half of them don't even know that they're gonna get it. And it used to be we would send four or $500 checks to those schools.
Exactly right.
Back when you couldn't sit at the night session because they were.
Packed.
Packed. And now, last year, it was literally under $10 a school.
Yeah, let's just get rid of it.
So then, you know, in the motion, it was always activity passes with the exception of the Parkston Classics, I think was how the motion read. Now it's just activity prices. Because of the little B, we don't do that. We keep the revenue from that. So I don't know why we ever did that for the classics. That was always confusing.
Okay, so we have, students are free, $50 for adults and get rid of charging for the classic.
The wording in there of, with the exception of the Parkston Classics.
Yeah, don't put it.
So maybe it's, do we have, we don't, we never did put the wording of the state association.
No, that's just something that we announce. If we host a region or I suppose it's.
I mean, everybody's, everybody knows that activity passes are not allowed.
To a sub-state level, you don't get any decision in it anyway. Even if you host, passes are, you know, passes are not honored. This is an activity association event hosted.
Not a Parkston event.
Yeah, exactly.
So when we do that.
Do we all agree on that?
Senior citizens also at $30. Just make sure we give that.
Yep, okay. All right. Any motions?
A motion, students free, $50 for the adult pass, $30 for senior citizens.
And when we mean students free, they don't pay to get in any games, period.
Yes, our students.
Our students.
Yes.
Parkston students.
Parkston students. There we go.
Let's double check it.
And that includes any activity where we charge, right? Like whether it's a track meet or a football game or whatever, they can get them free.
Students are free.
Okay.
Parkston students are free.
Parkston students are free.
Okay. So following activity, activity prices. We'll just put, I gotta double check that. Motion from before, minutes from September, or July, how it was worded. Does that, gotta remember if we had five and three in there. Sorry, I should add that part.
Is, is it ever been where your price designation for single events and double headers is designated within a motion like this?
That's what I'm looking, that's what I'm looking for to see.
I think we did put that in there.
Seems to me like it was too. That's why.
I suspect that your single prices will stay the same. I mean, that's only for your outside resources per se or those that come now and then. I mean, they're gonna.
We will still put in there five and three and six and four. That's what I wanted to double check. And then just put the wording of Parkston students will be allowed to attend free of charge.
So Mr. McKinnon, you were talking about this here. So I, I get it as far as trying to get student participation because I, I did that. You're okay with revenue? I'm just thinking revenue's probably cut in half, potentially.
Yeah, from the activities perspective.
It's hard to tell what the student revenue is gonna be down because when we sell tickets at a game, we don't keep track of Parkston students and separate from the Mount Vernon students. Most of the time, the student paying.
Okay.
I mean, we probably, if we have five to 10 students that pay of our own, cuz we don't sell more than 40, 50. If we sell 40 student tickets at an event, that's not quite fair.
So most of our revenue comes from the other town.
From the other town for students. Where we're gonna lose it is probably the activity passes for those students, not the, not the gate. Okay, that was it. Yes, it was listed.
And maybe we'll get more adults to buy a pass.
So it's not gonna throw our budget out of?
No, I don't know. Not in the least. Well, it was only $2,900 last year, so.
Well, I mean, those families, this was.
Because of COVID.
Right, whereas if they all attend.
Before, maybe they didn't. Or there might be people who now buy.
Yeah, Craig, I'm giving you, I'm copying it.
We'll see.
Maybe they buy extra popcorn.
Maybe.
Right.
That goes to the booster club.
But keep in mind, that money is funneled back towards your activities.
It is, it is. It comes back to the school.
The higher the price of popcorn will.
Okay, so set the following activity prices. $3 students, $5 for adults, taking out the $30 for student activity passes. Leaving the wording in there of $50 for adult activity passes, $30 for adults over 65 years of age for activity passes. Single admission to double headers, $4 for students, $6 for adults. And then after that, I will put all Parkston students.
K through 12. You want K through 12? I think K is.
K through 12 will be allowed to attend all Parkston events free of charge. Does that sound all right, Jed? Because you made a motion.
I like that.
And I'm taking that wording out of there, the passes for the classes, cuz that was in there. So I'll reread that again. So that's following activity prices. $3 for students and $5 for adults for single games. $4 for students, $6 for adults for double headers. $50 for adult activity passes, $30 for adults over 65 years of age. And all Parkston students K through 12 will be allowed to attend all Parkston events free of charge. There is another Parkston event, so it's not separated from South Dakota high school activities. Any questions? You need a second? I have, right?
Second.
Schumfelder and then Weber. Any other discussion? Any none, all in favor, say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carried.
All right, the next thing on the agenda is approve handbooks. These were discussed at the last meeting. Principals were not proposing changes at the time, other than language and grammar edits. We do not have a motion for this, their approval in July. They were approved a year ago by the board. So we just need to make a motion to approve the current handbooks.
So moved by Leishen?
Seconded.
Seconded by Nival to approve the elementary and junior, senior eye handbooks as presented. Any other discussion? Any none, all in favor, say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carried.
All right, next agenda item is South Dakota high school sports association?
Activities association.
Activities. Board of control election for West River at-large position.
So this is probably the third time we've been down this route because they keep having ties that this is a runoff election. So I put in your packet where I put their bios in there and then the actual, which I have here, I'll just mark one. So essentially, somebody has to make a motion to vote for either Kelly Mesmer of Harding County to be at that West River at-large position or Todd Palmer or Sturgis Brown. Differences, Sturgis Brown representation of AA school, Kelly Mesmer, Harding County. Obviously, a school not your size, but certainly smaller. So I know both of those guys, they're both good guys.
What do you recommend?
You know, my past experience is probably Kelly Mesmer in the state of South Dakota has been more at the AD level than many years of service versus Todd at this time. Todd's done a nice job. He went from Chamberlain to Sturgis. So, you know, I'm okay with.
So Kelly has more years of experience?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
And you're going with Mesmer?
Yeah.
Moved by Paul. Seconded by Weber to vote for Mesmer for South Dakota high school board of control, West River at-large position. Any other discussion? Any none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried.
All right.
Kelly Mesmer, right, it's the first name?
M-E-S-M-R.
Mesmer.
Yep.
All right, next thing on the agenda is our executive session. So we need to.
That means everybody's got to leave with the exception of school board members.
Uh, we gotta reset. No, we don't need to move, just, we gotta recess at what time?
You need a motion if you take past practices here.
We take a recess to clear the room, back into session sometime, then a motion going.
Thank you.